Good morning. Welcome to the April 12 meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission. I'd like to request everybody stand for the flag salute.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you make the roll call?
Commissioner Paul McKee?
Here.
Commissioner Nora Adukas?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on. First item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of January 26, 2012. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item, approval of minutes of February 23, 2012.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Third item, approval of minutes of March 15, 2012.
Move to approve as presented? Second.
You have a comment, or? Did I call for the vote?
Yep.
Okay. We're going to then move-
We need to-
No, you need to go.
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call for the vote, then?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead of myself. We're going to take these, the two matters pending out of order. The second first, AP 11-0009, Malibu Bay Club, Malibu Bay Owners Association. I understand there's an accommodation.
Good morning, Chair Onstott, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michelle Gluckert-Diana of Planning Division Staff. And before staff's presentation on this matter, we wanted to bring to your attention that the appellant yesterday verbally indicated to staff that he concurs with staff's recommendation on this matter. So, in the interest of time, we wanted to bring the appellant forward at this time to address your commission on that. And then if you decide that staff's presentation is necessary, we'd be happy to do so. So I'd like to introduce the appellant for this case.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lee Gibson. I'm the attorney for Malibu Bay Club and Malibu Bay Owners Association.
Mr. Gibson, would you state your address, please?
Yes, my address is, my mailing address is PO Box 7209 Ventura, 93006. Physical address is 5425 Everglades, right down the street.
Thank you, sir.
I've read staff's report. I think it's well-prepared and well-thought-out. And if the finding, based upon the recommendation, and that there is no jurisdiction, and if your finding is on that, we would like to submit it on that and proceed, and allow you to proceed accordingly with, based on the report alone.
Thank you, sir. The staff's position? Same, I take it, no jurisdiction.
It's the same as in the staff report. Would you like me to read through the actions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'd move recommend staff action.
We have a motion, recommendation of staff action. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have, it's on the basis of no jurisdiction, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is the conditional use permit to authorize the operation and maintenance of a fitness and wellness camp. It's CUP LU 10-0108 and CPD number LU 11-0061. Do we have the staff report, please?
Hello, Commissioner, Chair Onstott, Commissioners. My name is Christina Ritzari of RMA Planning Division Staff. Before I start my presentation, the, I want to bring you, bring to your awareness that the applicant's representative, Mr. Steve Perlman, has requested a continuance of the hearing. We received a letter yesterday, April 11, requesting a continuance for four weeks. You have his letter before you as, in addition to the planning director's response to that. So, I would ask your commission if you want to continue the hearing or have staff present their presentation to you.
Well, we'll take up the issue of the motion to continue right now.
Okay.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the correspondence from Kim Prielhart dated April 11 regarding the request for continuance?
Yes, sir.
You haven't seen it? Why don't you take a look at it?
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Yes.
I have a question. Do we have any speakers on this item today?
Well, we have one. I have one speaker card, that's all. The applicant.
The applicant.
The appellant.
Thank you.
I suppose, given the situation, we should make disclosures. However, first, while you're doing that, taking a look at that, Paul, we probably should have disclosures by the commissioners since we are continuing the matter. Isn't that correct, Robert?
I believe the question of continuance is before you at this point in time. So, if we're not going to get into the substance of the matter, then disclosures may not be necessary.
Fine, thank you.
I think disclosures would be necessary if you start taking testimony at hearing.
They'll give it a moment or two.
I'm good. She's good.
Everyone's had an opportunity to read the correspondence. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, before we do that, I'd like to accept into the record, if, since we're going to continue this, items eight through 11 that were presented to us in these exhibits.
No, I second that. That's a motion.
Any further discussion? Oh, I have some discussion. Under the terms of this continuance, I assume they continue operation unless something has changed. Is that correct?
It's my understanding that they've been continuing operation since we've been processing the permit. And the, the matter before you of the continuance is we have addressed, or I have addressed in the, in the April 11 memo to you. So, we received Mr. Perlman's request for a continuance yesterday. And basically, it says that they do not, that they need additional time, and they've had the time. The memo explains all of the conditions and how they've had the time to review them, and also how they've had the time to review the staff report. They've had the same time as every applicant has to review the staff report. And most all of the conditions were provided to them in either January 24 or April 5. So, and they've had this, this following week to review the, the additional conditions. Then they also said that they find conflicts within and between various conditions that need resolution, and those have not been brought to our attention. And if there's conflicts, it's really up to your planning commission to decide those conflicts. And then they, it said it would create operational and feasibility problems for the applicant, but they shouldn't be operating to begin with. So those are the issues that we're bringing before you. The applicant has specifically requested this date. We accommodated this date. They requested this time. We accommodated this time. There are people here in the audience that are here for this hearing. And so, I would request that your planning commission consider at minimum to hear the planning commission's staff report and to hear any public testimony.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In light of all that, I would like to recommend to this body that we go ahead and hold the hearing, since we do have the public available. And then if we decide to continue at that point, we certainly still have that capability if this body feels it does not have enough information to act on. So I'd like to make the motion to continue with the hearing and reserve the right to grant a continuance.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We'll continue with the hearing.
So as I mentioned before, I'm Christina Ritzari of RMA Planning Staff, and I'm the case planner for the project before you today. I'd like to take care of a few housekeeping matters before I start my presentation. And those are exhibits eight through 11 that were received after the planning commission's staff report packet was sent to the commission and to the public. So exhibit eight is a letter from the Environmental Health Division to WREA, and it's dated April 5, 2011. And that letter is a response to WREA's questions about what needs to be done to complete one of the conditions, and that's the onsite wastewater treatment plant. Exhibit nine is an email from the planning director, Kim Prielhart, to Steve Perlman dated April 10, 2012. And that email basically says that, you know, you must come to the hearing to ask for continuance. And exhibit 10 is an errata memorandum from the planning director to your commission, and that is regarding the misnumbering of the recommended actions in the staff report. So I'd like to say that when you are making your decision on this matter, if that is going to happen today, to look at that errata memo for the correct numbering and the recommended actions. And exhibit 11 is a memorandum from the planning director to your commission that was dated yesterday, April 11, with requesting a continuance, and we just discussed that. So the project before you, before you today is a conditional use permit number LU 10-0108 and a coastal plan development permit LU 11-61. The applicants are the Ranch at Live Oak. And the project site is located at 1222 Cothran Road in the Santa Monica Mountains. And this is the site of the former Lazy Jay Ranch Kids Camp that operated on the site from 1968 to 2009. The zoning for the parcel is coastal rural exclusive, 40 acres, minimum lot size, with a Santa Monica Mountains overlay. And the land use designation for the general plan and the coastal area plan is rural open space. The parcel is, is, contains approximately 37.10 acres, and the CUP portion of the site would encompass 6.6 acres. And the coastal plan development permit portion of the site would contain, be contained within .64 acres. This is a view of the project area from Yerba Buena Road. And as you see, Cothran Road is to the east of the site, and you can just see some of the, the roofs of the cabins that are there. So the, the project before you has been in violation of several county codes, including environmental health, building and safety, and fire codes, and also with the, with the Code Compliance Division, specifically in violation of the coastal zoning ordinance. There are three open violations on the project site from the Code Compliance Division. And these include construction without permits, electrical connections without permits, and demolition without permits, and garage conversion without permits. The Environmental Health Division has construction and operation of a public swimming pool without permits, and construction and operation of a retail food facility without permits, and construction and operation of massage huts without permits. And the Fire Protection District also has violations. There are numerous violations and inconsistencies with the fire code, but some, and some of these violations include exposed electrical panels, open junction boxes and exposed wire, and lack of fire extinguishers in all buildings. At the conclusion of my presentation, we have staff from the Code Compliance Division and the Environmental Health Division to specifically, on hand to specifically address any questions you may have regarding the violations on the site. And also exhibit seven of your staff report specifically details the violations on the site. So before you today is a conditional use permit to request the, it would authorize the operation and maintenance of an unpermitted fitness and wellness camp. The project description proposes to have 32 overnight guests stay within cabins on the site for a seven-day period. There would be eight employees, and guests would be shuttled to and from the site each seven-day period. There would be a proposed onsite wastewater treatment plant for the CUP portion of the site. And with approval of the CUP, all of the structures that have been legalized, have been modified or constructed without permits would be legalized. To give you a visual orientation of the site, here is the site plan of the CUP portion. This is the entrance road to the site off Cothran Road. And this is the foreman's office in utility building that has been altered. The exercise room has been altered. All, all of these structures that you see here have been altered. The storage sheds, cabins, and pool and spa. So as I said, all, all the structures on the site have been, I'll say, most of the structures on the site have been altered without permits. And that constitutes 9,861 square feet. And there are several new structures on the site, and that includes a swimming pool and spa, some storage sheds, and massage, massage meditation huts that have now been converted, would be converted into storage sheds. And that includes 6,108 square feet. The second portion of the project is a coastal plan development permit, and that would authorize alterations to an existing single-family dwelling and construction of a new 567 square-foot detached garage. The alterations include the legalization of a converted garage into living space, and per the zoning, coastal zoning ordinance, this is considered a second dwelling unit. And it has two bathrooms and two bedrooms. And it's the, and legalization of, an alteration of the, of the alteration of the basement enhancements, and that includes electrical, drywall, et cetera. And the legalization of two unpermitted detached trellis structures. So aside from the recreation hall that is part of the CUP area, this is the, encompasses the CPD area. And it, this is the location of the detached garage that is not built yet, the second dwelling unit, and the trellis, two trellises, and the basement enhancements. So the project before you was analyzed for environmental impacts, and it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration would be prepared for potentially significant but mitigable impacts to biological resources. There were five mitigation measures proposed for the project, and that, and those include the avoidance of nesting birds, the removal of a drainage crossing, a culvert that is within the oak woodland and next to the cabins, and the recording of a restrictive covenant to preserve locally important communities, and to perform Bryant's wood rat surveys and buffers if there would be any new alterations or new construction in the future, and special status wildlife surveys and the relocation of them. So these mitigation measures are included in, as conditions 24 through 28 of exhibit five of your staff report, which are the conditions of approval for the CUP. And at the conclusion of my presentation, if you have questions regarding the biological mitigation measures, planning staff, the planning staff biologist is available to answer those questions for you. And the MND was sent out for public comment from January 31 to March 1, 2012. It was sent to the State Clearing House, and they had no comment on the project. We did receive public comments regarding the MND, and our staff responses to those comments are, are in exhibit four of your staff report. And through looking at the comments, we determined that there would be no new impacts or, or new concerns regarding, of an environmental nature regarding the project. So to also visually orientate yourself with the site, some pictures for you. This is the unpermitted dining hall, retreat offices, and social gathering area for the retreat guests. And this was originally the foreman's office when it was the Lazy Jay Kids Camp. This is the inside of the foreman's office that will now, well, has been, been used as a dining hall for the guests. And this is the unpermitted commercial kitchen that is also inside the foreman's office. And these are the, some of the altered guest cabins. And this is the unpermitted storage sheds. And as I mentioned before, on the elevation plans, I believe this is noted as massage or meditation huts, but the applicant has since revised this project to say that these are just storage sheds. This is the unpermitted exercise room, which originally was the bathrooms and showers for the kids camp. And this is the unpermitted public pool and spa. And this is the unpermitted staff residence that will house the, or that is housing the eight staff members. And this is the single-family dwelling with the second dwelling unit in this portion of the house. And this is just a up-close picture of the second dwelling unit. And these are the unpermitted trellis structures. So the findings for the project are that the proposed project, the CUP and the CPD are consistent with the coastal zoning ordinance and the county general plan and the coastal area plan as conditioned. And decision not. As your, your commission has broad authority as the decision-maker for the project to either approve, deny, or modify wholly or partly the request before you. And some factors that you can take into account when you're making your decision is that the, the operation has been operating with, without a CUP since 2010. And despite several county directives not to continue your operation, to actually cease the operation, that has not occurred. And the fact that there are, there actually have been structures, structures that have been built, such as the pool, from, from the first time code compliance went out to the site to the second time code compliance went out to the site. And to, and if the commission decides to accept the, approve the conditional use permit and the CPD as conditioned, staff have recommended some conditions that will ensure future compliance with the project. And those include condition six is the acceptance of conditions, and that requires the applicant to, in writing, accept the conditions. I do want to note that the applicant has already accepted the mitigation measures in writing. Condition seven is the use inauguration. In addition to paying all county fees owed for the processing of the permit and the violations, as well as getting all the required building and safety permits and zoning clearances and any other permits that are required, the applicant must cease operations of the site, of the fitness and wellness camp, from the date that your decision is made by this commission to the date that the zoning clearance is issued for use inauguration. Condition 7B is the permit life of the operation. This permit is, as conditioned, is, will be allowed for a five-year period ending in 2017. And if they're, if they're found to be in compliance with their conditions, the applicant could request to have the application, the use continue with the grant, with the submission of another modification request. And condition 10E is violations. That means that if the applicant is found to be operating the site from the, from the date the decision is made by your commission to the date of the use inauguration zoning clearance is issued, then that is a direct violation of their conditions and sufficient grounds to revocate the permit. And condition F is inspections, and that allows county staff to inspect the site at any time during the five-year period to ensure that the site is, and the operations comply with their conditions of approval. So the recommended actions, as stated in the errata is, which is exhibit 10 of your staff report packet, staff recommends that you approve the project as recommended in the recommended actions one through six. That concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I'd like to call for disclosures on behalf of the commissioners at this time. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosure. Excuse me, no disclosures.
Commissioner Weisner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Adukas?
None.
Commissioner Maji?
No disclosures.
And none by me. Does the commission have questions of staff at this point?
If I may, Mr. Chair. The question I have is, a lot of what was presented is the fact that there were no permits pulled, et cetera. As far as any actual inspections of, not adequately built, specifically what I'm looking at is the swimming pool. Is it just the fact that no permit was pulled, or has it an actual inspection as far to the safety, compliance, and those issues? Or is that something that's going to be required part of the issuance?
Environmental Health staff is here to answer that question for you. I bet you can call them up.
Melinda Talent with Environmental Health. Yeah, no plans were submitted prior to construction of the swimming pool and spa, and a permit to operate was also not filed for. So we do not know how that pool was built and whether or not it'll meet the requirements.
And so it's, you haven't done no physical, actual physical inspection other than just taking a picture of it?
We've been to the site to look at the facilities on the site, but have not done the inspections for the requirements, specific requirements for the permits.
Okay, then one more narrow. It came to my attention a couple of years ago, there was a Baker Act as far as safety for the drains for, is that something that you would review at the same time?
Yes, it is. So that has not been verified.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had a question. Ordinarily, if someone would pull a permit for a pool, what are the steps in, in inspections or what's the process that they go through to ensure that the pool is constructed safely?
First, they need to submit the plans, the drawings, so that we can evaluate the slopes, the sizes, make sure they meet the requirements, the equipment. And then we also do a couple of inspections. We do a pre-gonite inspection, which is the, the rough rebar before they pour in the concrete to make sure that it meets all the sloping requirements, handholds, you know, other things like that. Then once they pour the, the first concrete, we do an inspection to verify again that everything's been met. And then we do a second inspection after the plaster, let's see, pre-gonite, pre-plaster, and then a final. So we have three inspections.
And then, given that this didn't go through that process, what kind of look can you take at these things, or what kind of investigation can you do to make sure that these things were done in such a way to protect public safety?
Well, that'd be very difficult to do at this point, because we cannot verify the rebar. We may have to have them uncover something, but I can tell you something right off, the spa cannot be permitted in its current configuration, because we do require a four-foot separation between the pool and spa. So that could not be permitted as such. And we look at deck material and handholds, fencing.
And, and the purpose of these standards are to?
Safety. That's the main consideration in that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Paul?
No.
Okay. I have questions, but I don't know who, who to answer. I have questions regarding the kitchen, the electrical and fire situation there. I don't know who from staff can answer those, but would you come up if you would, please? Sorry about that.
No problem.
At least, in going through the documents, at least in one instance, there was an electrical fire. And I understand because of the various conditions there, this has been considered a public nuisance. I'm particularly concerned with the serving of food and the health situation in the kitchen, environmental health, and the electrical situation and fire danger, because this is pretty much akin to a hotel. Can you talk to me about code violations as to fire safety and electrical and the kitchen?
I cannot answer the questions on the fire code. However, I know that the fire was located in the main residence kitchen when that was being remodeled, not in one of the commercial kitchens.
Okay.
So, but as far as the commercial kitchens, we have not inspected the remodeled foreman's kitchen into a commercial kitchen. Inspected as in meeting our permit requirements, because that, again, would require a plan check review and an inspection for those specific requirements.
Can you address the issue of electrical wiring?
No, that would be building and safety or code compliance.
Good morning.
My name is Elizabeth Cameron, I'm a senior enforcement officer for RMA Code Compliance. And I also have Jim Doperding.
Director of Code Compliance.
I'm particularly concerned with health and safety of guests and residents there.
Yes, sir. I've conducted three different inspections, and I was notified by the fire department after October 31 of 2010 that there was a residential fire in the electrical above the kitchen of the single-family dwelling. There were currently remodel permits issued for the house by building and safety, but the electrical was not inspected. I was notified by the fire, the fire inspectors that a nail had gone through some conduit and therefore created the fire, which we have enlarged pictures for you.
I apologize, we don't have a slide up for you, but you can see in this one where a nail goes right through the conduit. The work was done under permit, but had not been inspected.
It had not been inspected by building and safety.
I was notified by the fire inspectors that a nail had gone through some conduit and therefore created the fire, which we have enlarged pictures for you.
I apologize, we don't have a slide up for you, but you can see in this one where a nail goes right through the conduit. The work was done under permit, but had not been inspected.
It had not been inspected by building and safety at that time. Subsequent to the fire, the building department did issue electrical permit for the electric gate and for the rest of the wiring at the facility, because it was underrated and it was hot to the touch. So, a subsequent permit was issued on an emergency basis by the building official to remedy the rest of the electrical that was going to the guest cabins, to the non-permitted entry gate, and some of the other facilities. So, that was subsequent to the fire.
What has or has not been inspected in terms of electrical?
The single-family dwelling has had a number of remodel permits and stop work orders, because they would put in beams and things. So, the main house has been inspected, and the wiring going to the cabins and to the accessory structures have been inspected and to the gate. But the structures and their modifications going from dormitories to single suites with bathrooms have not been inspected.
And these are the rooms that guests would occupy?
Yes, sir. And the kitchen, exercise facilities, and the storage huts that they used to receive massages in.
Of those matters you did, that are not permitted, but you did inspect, was the work done to code?
I did not do a full inspection. I did notice some things that didn't come up, didn't match, like the riserun going up to the steps leading to the pool, the self-closing gate for the pool. There was no handrails, there's no ADA accessibility for any customers. I mean, I could probably go back and make an analysis. I was just there, every time I would go back, there'd be more items, and I'd have to open up a new case and address them.
Well, I'm specifically concerned with health and safety issues of whatever type and variety. We want to continue to operate while this process is going on, and it weighs heavily on my mind that we may have health and safety matters out there.
I know that the fire prevention department has been there and worked with them closely to get water into the sprinkler system of one building, and to make sure that there was some extinguishers and other items. But I'm not a plan check engineer to make sure that there's access or egress problems or other structural issues, because the structures have been rebuilt, remodeled, and altered.
And I want to be really clear, too. Between our first inspection and our second inspection, we issued a stop work order. The work was completed in violation of that order. So, all the walls were closed up, all the construction that had started was completed, and the pool was built in its entirety between our first and second visit.
When was the first cease and desist given? Do you know?
One second. This was after sending letters to the various attorneys to gain access after we saw on the internet that they were planning to open.
Okay. And what construction took place after that?
I returned later with representatives from environmental health, and we saw the commercial kitchen had been completed with all the appliances installed in the swimming pool and spa, and the other structure that has the commercial laundry facilities and bathrooms had been completed and landscaped, and new walls, and outside retaining items around the access, and where emergency response vehicles would respond.
What if any explanation did you get from the owner?
I found the first time it was the contractor saying, "Figure out what we did," that was a direct quote to me.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The, I was trying to obtain information from the contractors who were on site, and they told me to figure out what we did. That's a quote. So, I went and did my first inspection, came back, checked old records, and prepared my first notice of violation. And then, we went back and the swimming pool, and everything was pretty much buttoned up, and they were ready to start operating.
Do we ever get an explanation as to why they continued in the face of a cease and desist order?
No. We didn't get an explanation. So, the planning department is simply processing their permit. We did bring them in for a meeting with the applicants, with their attorneys, and with their representatives, and said, you know, the code requires that we process your permit, but it's going to, it's not going to be very easy for you when you come before the planning commission if you don't stop. The agencies that are doing the enforcement, that have civil administrative penalties, that are working with the district attorney's office, right, are code compliance and our environmental health department. The planning department is processing the proposed permit. Those are the findings that we make. Will the proposed, will the proposed project meet the findings? And with all of the requirements in the conditions, yes, the proposed permit will, but there, you can see, there's a lot of things they have to do. You know, a package chute treatment plant, those things are not easy.
And expensive.
And they are expensive, right. But they, it's, these guys are doing their job on one side, and I'm trying to do mine on the other, and I'm hoping that they can meet together here at the planning commission.
Is a prosecution being moved along by the district attorney's office?
Both environmental health and code compliance have filed with district attorney's office for criminal charge.
What's the status of that?
It's pending.
It's pending. We don't, we don't know.
It's also my understanding from separate meetings and discussions that I've had with Mr. Delberdang, and Mr. Baca, from meetings that they've attended, that they were very clear that they weren't going to shut down. They were not. And I think that the calculation on their website showing 32 people up there at $5,600 a week is $179,000 every week. And so, I can see why perhaps they wouldn't want to shut down. They have an elaborate website that is inviting the public out to this unpermitted kitchen, unpermitted buildings, unpermitted pool, and it seems like a public health and safety issue. So, the condition I'm sure that they object to in the conditions is the one that I placed in there that's saying that I could recommend that you could get a permit, but that you couldn't operate the facility until you met all of your prior to use inauguration conditions just the same as everybody else. I believe it's also an unfair business practice for them to operate without having the permits where other facilities like this would.
I do want to add, we've imposed civil administrative penalties of $600 a day, and those have been in place since May 23rd of 2011.
May?
May 23rd.
And I'm assuming those would all have to be paid and remedied before a permit will be issued for occupancy?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Question for code enforcement. For the record, what was your purpose of going out there originally?
Code compliance received a citizen's complaint and inquiry about the, if the construction going on was permitted and how it was going on so quickly. And it was a citizen's complaint and a subsequent follow-up by the supervisor's office.
Prior to going out there, did you inspect the records within the county?
Yes, sir.
Was there a permit in place?
Not for any of the construction going on in the camp area.
Did you ask to see the permit when you got out there? See if there was a permit displayed anywhere when you got out there?
I checked our records. I didn't find any. And when I was dealing with the two contractors on site, I asked, "Do you have any plans? You know, do you have any documentation on site?" And they said, "No, figure out what we did." So, that's when I went back and prepared my first notice of violation.
Did you identify who the contractor was?
I, they came in subsequent, and they're two gentlemen that were from Port Huaynimi. They were, they were contractors.
Do you know whether they were licensed or not?
Yes, they were.
Okay. So, there would be bonds?
Yes.
Who is Judy Johnson?
She was the camp, the camp operator's daughter. Mrs. Johnson, who used to run the Lazy Jay camp, had passed away, and she inherited the property and subsequently sold it to Mr. Glasscock.
Is she on, and she's not on the permit, or the permit application at this time?
No. Mr. Glasscock and his contractors were the ones that received the permits for the single-family dwelling, and he purchased the property last fall, even with notice of non-compliance is recorded against the property title.
So, Judy Johnson no longer has any property rights?
Correct.
The reason I'm asking that specifically is because obviously, fire department went out there to conduct their inspections, and they found a number of violations that are identified here in the condition use permit application, looks like page 238 and 240 of our report. Many of them having to do with construction, construction issues, electrical issues, obviously, storage issues, CPG, location of CPG tank without a permit, and then the method in which it was installed. But I'm particularly concerned about the safety issues as well, not only for clients, but anybody else out there, in that there's, they found no approved evacuation, emergency evacuation plan, fire safety evacuation plan, and indication there was any sort of training for employees. As I got into that further, I found that there isn't sufficient area for the vehicle, a fire vehicle to turn around in, should it be called up to the area? Should there be a need to be called up to the area? Correct me if I'm wrong, I think I read in the report that this location geographically is located approximately three miles up above PCH?
Yes.
Up Yarababuea Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you aware of, is there somebody from fire here, is there?
No, I don't think so.
Are you aware of approximate response time would be from the fire station down at the bottom of the hill to that location? How long did it take you to get up there?
Oh, goodness, probably five minutes, because it's a windy road. I know that LA County responds a lot if the Station 56 is out on another call. I believe the night of the fire, LA County responded first and had problems, because they didn't have the plan on site. I believe there is one now, but I would have to do further research. I know the fire prevention officers were out there with us each time and did more inspections and tried to do immediate life safety issues. They had a sprinkler system that had no water, I mean, things like that. So, there was some items that the fire prevention officers have repaired.
Doors could lock from the outside.
What is the location of LA Fire in relation to Ventura County Fire? I know where Ventura County Fire is at, down at Tonga and PCH.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure where the current station is. I haven't done any research on that. One of the times I went out to inspect the, I was being shown the different suites, and they were locking the doors from the outside. I know we had that repaired, because that was a problem. They were making sure that the inspectors were not locked in the cabins during our inspection. So, that was an issue that I had addressed and took over to fire prevention, and I believe the locking of the clients inside these cottages has ceased.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I need a clarification on these kinds of situations whereby you've got many things that have already been built, buttoned up, as you say, and so forth. From your part of the woods in this involvement, what do you do? I mean, you carve into walls, do you dig holes around foundations? I mean, what do you do to finally get something permitted without having seen it through all the different phases that you normally would?
We would request that as-built construction drawings and engineering be submitted to building and safety staff. It would be up to the engineer and the onsite inspector to have them remove drywall or tiling, to, or, you know, do x-rays to see if there's enough rebar, soil reports, it's all going to have to be after the fact. And it's a little tougher and a little slower, but we have to make sure that it meets the minimum state standards for construction.
So, there is a process there that you go through?
Yes, sir.
But it sounds much more difficult than done correctly in the first place?
Yeah, people don't want to put their name on something they can't verify that meets state certification standards.
I'm not sure who to address this to, but is there an outstanding agreement? Are there outstanding issues with regard to the access road? Is this something that, that building and safety goes to? I'm looking at, I think it's 168 in our packet. There's an agreement with the county to pay for plans and improvements along the property frontage. Is this going to be a county road, or? The number is partly obscured by the address. Do you have another question? Let me look at that for just a second.
Okay, okay.
As a trailer, I think the report indicated on-prem, the access road off of Corthon is only 12 foot, and it's required because of the fire area to be minimum 15 feet.
It could be 15 to 20. Depends on the number of structures being served, but the mobile, the double Y mobile phone, is that what you're asking about? That kind of is a branch off. It's located on top of the old tennis court.
Okay.
Chair Anstott, Commissioner Adukas. With regard to that, the item on page 168 of your staff report, that refers to a standard county agreement that the transportation division imposes on projects on remote rural roads, which don't currently meet the full test of county standards. If at some point in the future, the county comes through to widen that road and bring it up to standards, this conditionally permitted use would be required to contribute their share to that widening. And that's what this is about. And they're saying that they don't think they should have to. Well, that's a standard condition from the transportation division.
Do all property owners along that roadway have to contribute?
Probably not, but this is a conditionally permitted use, and this is part of the county code. That is the code that is enforced by the transportation division. When you have a conditionally permitted use, you're required to contribute for bringing the road in front of that use up to standards.
Thank you.
Any further questions at this time? I have a question, I have a question, staff. Christian, if you would, just briefly.
Thank you.
Then a follow-up question, County Council. I noticed the CUP talks about the maintenance, maintaining 27 designated parking spaces, and the CPD talks about two designated parking spaces. I guess my first, my question primarily is, if the guests are being shuttled up there, what is the purpose of maintaining 27 parking spaces?
That's partly due to the requirements of the zoning ordinance with regards to parking, and also, that's what the applicant has proposed for the CUP portion of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
But the, that the guests that come to use the facility would be shuttled in, to and from the site with a shuttle every seven days.
Okay. Thank you. My, my perception tells me that there are other activities, obviously, occurring out there, will occur out there, besides the spa and the week of physical activity. Okay, thank you. I haven't looked at the applicant's website. It's been commented about a couple of times now, and it obviously has some impact on what's going on out there right now. What is your advisement, and what is our position as far as viewing, taking initiative to view that website? Or is that something we should allow staff to bring to us?
Through the chair, in addressing Commissioner Rodriguez's comment about the website that is purportedly being operated by the Live Oak Ranch for purposes of soliciting public, you know, availment of their services and for commercial purposes, I think it'd be well within your authority to direct staff to obtain information of their website and their ongoing operations, if that is something that you feel is necessary for you to make a decision. So, you could ask staff to definitely pull that for you.
Thank you. Any further questions at this time? Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing and receive the presentation from the property owner or his representative. I have one card for Mr. Pearlman. I have no other cards. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Steve Pearlman, 7811 Marin Lane, Ventura. Been before this body many times. Been before this body many times. I really didn't want to say anything today because I don't believe you have the full written record to assist me, to assist you in any statements that I might make or provide.
Does this relate to your request for a continuance?
Yes.
Could you focus on that first then?
I want to make this as easy as I can. We did not get the conditions until late Thursday, holiday weekend. Normally in the course of events, I get them a week or more in advance and we discuss them, but okay, this time we did not. I think that you received none of the information that we have provided over the year that I've been working on this project. I got involved in it in January of 2011. By April in 2011, I had filed everything. We had some problems with the wastewater treatment plant issue. I can get into that if you want, I'd rather not. At this point, I would rather you have that in writing. I'd rather have all our responses to you in writing, which are many, including a project description. So that's really the reason. I gave an attachment of some of the things that maybe I should mention to you. A lot was said. We have all fire permits. Everything has been approved by the fire department. I have stamped plans, I have everything. Not everything's been done yet, obviously, because we are not allowed to do them. But March 24th, 2011, I had all stamped plans. My understanding is from talking to Mr. Dodd, Fire Department, that everybody is aware that all he has to do is final inspection. All of the fire safety issues are done. All of the documentation of what the managers of the facility are to do, are all there, all approved, every single one of them, and they have been approved. So, and there's a list of maybe 12 or 13 things that are, that I put on here that I think are inaccurate as far as staff report is concerned, as far as assessment information is concerned, as far as aerial photos are concerned. So I would rather present that to you, to allow you to take a look at all of that. And I think that it was brought to my attention in trying to get some of the permits taken care of, shall we say, from the building department. They were so general and so scattered that I sat down with the building official and he went over what they had inspected and what we had left to do. A lot of the things that were brought up here today have already been done, already been taken care of, lots of things. Some of the conditions, and I'm going to say about 14 conditions that I've gone through, are conflicting. I don't understand, are beyond the scope, I think, of what's required because they may be standard for industrial or commercial developments. The way they're written, I had occasion, I was able to go to the, to the building depart, I mean, to Public Works about the grading, and they said, yes, it's not really written right, but you know what we're talking about. Okay, I want to get that all out on the table. There hasn't been the time. I disagree that basically there's a whole bunch of public safety, health safety things. I think Ms. Cameron was out there, and the pool, yes, was built without permit. Had a lock on it, it's not used. So a lot of these things, there's been a big deal about the animal shade covers requiring demo permits, and we got all kinds of fines and all that. They don't even require building permits. So I said, okay, if you can get me a demo permit and figure out, I'll do it. It's not a big deal. We didn't take them down, the previous owner. A lot of this is on the previous owner, a lot of the problems. So all I want is the time not to stand here and hash out each of the individual conditions with you. I would like to present them. I've worked with staff for 25 years now. Most of them are my friends, and I think we can work this out. I need a little time, that's all I'm asking for, and I don't think there's the issue. Yes, there are things done without permit, I'm not going to say that there are. As far as land use is concerned, the staff report, absolutely, it's rather glowing on what a great project this is. Let us get it, let us get it done. We have been in building plan check now for seven weeks. We had waited a long time to file our waste treatment plant because there was no process to do it. Monday I get a letter that, oh, you can do it now, and here's how it is. On Tuesday I filed it. We have, we have LA Regional Water discharge permit for two kitchens, all the bathrooms, everything. We've had that, and all that's known. The health department, I mean, the health department has issued all kinds of, every year they issued a permit. Whether or not there's a CUP on there from 2003 or not, I don't know. But every year through 2010, the permit was issued. They tell me it's for the other kitchen, not this kitchen, which this kitchen's always been used. But anyway, I've got into more than I want. But I think that it's a complicated case. It's got a long history going way back to Hopalong Cassidy. He put in the culvert. We're being required to take it out, and we are being punished for it. So these are kinds of things that I think can all be worked out. It's not that big a deal as far as I'm concerned. The land use issues are before you, and the land use issues, I have problems with conditions. I have read, I've read tens of thousands of conditions over the last 20 years. I've always got them worked out, or if we didn't. Mission Rock Road, we came to your commission and we worked out the last three or four out of the 280 that have been out there for 12 years. So I'm asking that again. That's all I'm asking for, is give me the time to respond. I've got the information that you received today, Exhibits 8, 9, 10, and 11. Well, yeah, I don't know what the responses are, I haven't, I haven't received them. The access road issue, my point in that, I met with Transportation and I asked, I want to, give me an example of what I have to sign and who else has signed it. Okay, I've asked that for months. I have nothing. We'll sign it. I mean, it's just, I want to know. I don't like open-ended things that say, you're going to do this, but, so I just want to know. Parking is leftover from the Lazy J. It just happened to be on the site plan when it was filed prior to my involvement. But there's, they're not going to use it, it's there, it's, you know, that's really what happened. So I think I've said more than I probably should have. I would indulge if you would give us the opportunity to respond in writing so that you have the entire record, the complete record, before you make any of your decisions. And I can't accept probably 10 of the conditions that are in there, the way they're written. And I don't want to spend your time by trying to hash them out. I think staff, the various departments, I've been trying to meet with the departments, but I've only had a couple of days. Nobody was here on Good Friday. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. Thank you.
We'll deal with the issue of the continuance now.
Yeah, that's why I want the continuance, is so that we can provide you with all of this backup information, all of the things that we've accomplished and all the things that have been done, so that we can respond in writing to the conditions. We can make them acceptable, but we need, and I need, legal counsel that I have not been able to get responses for on some of the things that I am concerned about. So that was, that would be the reason.
Just a second, I'm going to ask the counsel.
Yeah, that would be the reason for asking for a continuance.
Thank you, Sheriff, you'll stay right there. Counsel, what are our options related to this continuance?
Your options are, basically you can grant the continuance as requested, you can modify the terms and conditions of the continuance. They've asked for May 10th, I believe, and it's a scheduling issue. And at this point in time, that's probably the first thing you need to do, is just discuss amongst yourselves whether or not a continuance has been justified in your eyes as to going forward on this process.
I have a question for you. The concern I have and the concern that's been expressed are health and safety issues. And any continuance would seem to put those off as long as you continue to operate. Are you prepared to cease and desist to get a continuance?
That is not up to me. I have asked legal counsel for their input. We haven't had the time. We have addressed that issue in previous letters to staff. And I think that, from my perspective, from me, in the land use issue, it is out of the, it seems like it's been taken out of the land use realm and put into the code enforcement realm. And I've been told that I need to deal with each one of those separately. Planning, code enforcement, Public Works, fire, environmental health, which I've been trying to do. So I can't answer that without providing you a response to the full record.
I think, I think I heard the answer in all that.
Yes, I did too.
So, so is the appropriate, well, I see Richard putting.
Let's discuss first before we make a motion.
I have a question. Is the applicant here today?
No, he is not.
Will he be here at the next meeting if this is continued?
Yes.
You're speaking today on behalf of the applicant?
I am speaking on behalf of the applicant, and that's why we want to give you the full record.
It seems to me, you just said that this process is really into the violation arena, violation code, violation arena that the county has taken this process into. I mean, from where I sit, I think the applicant took it into that arena. When did operations begin out there as a health camp? In relation to when you were, when you were retained?
They probably started just around then. I don't know particularly exactly what day, but it was probably at the end of 2010, beginning of 2011. I think the first application was filed maybe in August of 2000. I wasn't involved. I don't know.
When were you retained?
That was 2010, as far as I recall.
When did construction occur? When did new construction occur in relation to when you were present?
Some, well, I think most of it had occurred, most of the, the things had been done. I got involved, like I say, I think it was like in January, December, January. Just took time to look at the record, to find out what, and I don't, I don't have exact dates. I could certainly get them for you if that were it. But yes, work has been done.
Well, I'm troubled by the fact that, and these are just my personal comments, troubled by the fact that you were, it appears to me you were part of the process. At some point, construction continued on a number of things after you were retained. And I understand you're vague with your dates, but.
Not really. I put an end to it, and I think that, I'm thinking April 15th for some reason, that I filed an enormous number of plans, and I know nothing had been done any differently from there, other than those things that the fire department wanted.
Okay, thank you.
That brought everything up to their codes.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
What did, why isn't the applicant here?
I think that, basically that, given the fact that we did not have an opportunity to respond in writing and give you what we feel you should have, particularly there's a project description that goes through a whole history of things, goes through each and every structure, what was done, what's being done to correct it, all of that, you don't have any of that. And I, I didn't want to get into this right now without you having the record, without having to go back and forth and verbalize and then go in and say, well, condition number so-and-so says this, but we think it should say that, what do you think, or what do you think, staff? I would like to get that sorted out before we come back to you. And if we can't, then we can't. But that's, that is the reason. I just, I think it's an unfair burden to the commission, to me, and to, and to the applicant, and I would like the opportunity to get you the full record.
Well, can I just state an opinion based on that?
Sure.
I can't imagine being an applicant in this situation and not coming here for my I think that that was a risk that didn't pay off for me. I'm very interested in what the 14 conditions are that are conflicting, and see first if they are. Go through the 10 that he's also said that he finds confusing. And then if we can go ahead and take these, you know, slog it out, it's early, and if we still need more information after that, then we can call for a continuance. But right now, I'm really interested in some of these points that Mr. Pearlman has made. That's my opinion.
Any further comments?
This time thing, I'm a little confused about. I mean, this has been going on for quite a while, and you want to respond. The only thing that's, as of late, was this water treatment situation, was it not? Everything else has been on the table for quite a while.
The, as far as I'm missing out on.
You're saying you didn't, you haven't been able to provide the information. Why not?
All of the, all of the information is in, that is in staff's file somewhere that we've provided. I guess we're going to get into it.
We're still addressing the issue of the continuance, sir.
Right, right. I'm trying to put the two together. The reason that I'm asking for the continuance is so that I can get you all of that information, and that you can have it in front of you in its proper place. That's the reason for the continuance. There are, as far as the wastewater treatment plant issue goes, we filed that. We actually balked at doing that originally. We didn't think we needed to because LA Regional said we didn't, but then we thought better of it, and we said, okay, we will do it. The plant, and you have a letter, I don't know what it is, from WREA, our consultant on it. Those plans were ready in October, November, we were ready to file, and there was no process in place to file it, we were told. I have a whole email stream. And then on Monday afternoon, I received a letter, and so we filed it on Tuesday. So we've done whatever we could do given, in the process, while we were trying to get these other things accomplished. So that, which doesn't speak to the, you wouldn't know that unless I told you, and that's the reason for the continuance. So I can get you that information to show you how this process has gone. And that's all, I'm just, I'm just respectfully asking that opportunity for another 30 days.
So are you talking about the information regarding the water treatment or other issues?
There are several issues that I have.
Okay, and how long has it been since you've known there was going to be a meeting today?
Oh, I've known there's been a meeting. The meeting was set up, but I did not get the conditions of approval nor the staff report until you did. But I did not, we didn't have time to prepare and get it back to you and get everything done in a timely manner of everything. It was Good Friday. I came here, I was looking for some of the departments to see if I could get some information. There was nobody here. What, Saturday was Passover, Sunday Easter, and I decided on Monday, I, really, I just don't have, there's not time to properly do it. And that's the reason for the continuance. I wish we could have waited for 30 days to go through this, but I understand.
Normally, this commission is quite solicitous of requests for continuance as long as we have a reasonable basis for it. requests for continuance, as long as we have a reasonable basis for it. And I understand and appreciate your position that Thursday through Thursday may not be sufficient time. But I have a serious problem granting a continuance when we have what appears to be real health and safety issues and what appears to be a conscious disregard for the county and the entire process based on their cease and desist orders. I would not hesitate, I'm speaking to myself personally, to grant you a continuance if you agreed to cease and desist. But you're not prepared to do that today, as you explained.
I cannot do that today, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could take a moment?
Certainly.
Staff, you could respond. Take -- because it's going to affect my decision on the continuance. If we approve the recommended actions, what steps will staff be taking?
If we approve the recommended actions, then you would approve his permit for a five-year period. They would, after the 10-day appeal period, they would need to cease operating, and then they would need to do what every permitee needs to do at that stage, is to do all of their prior true-use inauguration, which would include getting the pool permits from environmental health, getting the permits and building and constructing the wastewater treatment facility for their commercial kitchen, right? Getting all of the building permits. They would need to put all of that in place, and then we would give them the zoning clearance to begin operating.
But meantime, they'd have to cease operation?
There's just not a scenario for me, from a land use planning perspective, that makes it okay to operate a business without permits, not just land use permits, but the public health and safety permits as well. It doesn't seem reasonable, given their website, given their public safety espousal on their website, you know, how their site is safe. And then the people are coming up there with no idea that these are not permitted. So that's why the condition was reworked for me to saying, "You need to cease operating." We don't normally have this circumstance, right?
And of course, if we deny this, then the cease and desist function also?
If you deny it, then they would be just strictly in their case with the district attorney, I guess, at this point, and they would have no hopes of getting a permit, or they could appeal that decision to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pearlman, is your owner available by telephone? Because I'm going to give a 10-minute recess for you to call at individual and see if he'll cease and desist, and will grant a -- I will move to grant a continuance. I don't -- can't speak for the rest of the board.
We can try, sure.
Thank you, sir. We're recessed for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Owner, I was unable to. I have contacted legal counsel and we'll throw ourselves on your mercy. If we could get a few weeks to wind down, we would appreciate it. We would still like to come back to you. We would still like you to look at the full record and to go over the conditions. I don't think at this point going over the conditions because the other agencies are not here and those are the ones, some of them we'd have to deal with. So, I will, at that request, I will leave that up to the counsel unless I made it more confusing.
Well, are you saying that you will agree to cease and desist further operation for two weeks in consideration for a continuance of this matter for the four weeks?
Well, yes. I mean, we would like a few weeks to shut it down. And then we would still like to come back to you because I still want to, at some point, I want to, and if we, obviously if you require us to shut it down, I still want to come back to you. I want to continue the hearing and come back to you so that we can get the conditions of approval hashed out a little bit better. And that would be, and if you can't do it on May 10th, you know, we'll try, we'll try that. I'm not making myself clear.
Well, you're clear. Madam Planning Director?
Maybe if you ask me a question.
If the issue, where would you be or where would staff be in a situation where they stipulate that they will shut down in two weeks if they can come back and forth on a continuation of this matter? What would your position be?
I think, in my opinion, I'd rather come back sooner because as I stated in my April 11th memo, if Mr. Pearlman has issues with the other agency's conditions, he's had those conditions since January 24th of 2012, right? So, I'm anxious to hear what those could possibly be and how those conflict. So, I mean, I would like to have that discussion sooner than later because, you know, those conditions, like I said, he's had since January 24th and the vast majority of the planning commission, he's had 19 out of the 35 as well, too. And I don't believe we've heard anything about conflicting conditions or conditions that you didn't agree with. So, there was a very small amount that he's had for one week. And so, you know, that's one issue. So, I would rather, if he's going to shut down in a couple of weeks, I would rather come back in a couple of weeks because I can see everybody has availability on April 26th from your calendar.
Is the room available?
This room? This room's always available for us, right? And so, and then we've taken the role of the planning commission on April 26th. I don't know if Roberts, you here on the 26th?
Yeah, I'll be available.
Okay, I will get it back to you then. I will meet with staff. I will meet with all the staffs I can and I'll have it in writing. And then maybe if we need, if there's a few things left, then we'll hash it out here. Let me, if I might, just one thing, that the way the conditions, I've known what we had to do, but the conditions are written in such a manner that they are different or can be interpreted different or are in fact something I've never seen. So, but I will work it out in two weeks if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Further discussions from the commission?
I still didn't hear that he was willing to cease and desist. And since we are aware that it's a health and safety issue and this is something that's been ongoing, I think the best thing to do is to just simply start the hearing, move forward, and if the commission decides that it needs more information after that, then we can have, we can call for a continuance then. That's my opinion.
Okay, I think we've agreed that we will cease and desist.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Wait.
He just said that.
You're going to cease and desist starting immediately?
Well, we're asking for two weeks so we can get the shutdown done.
I understand.
I understand.
Well, I understand.
That he'll cease and desist in two weeks.
Right, not for two weeks.
He will cease operations. All operations will cease on a specific date is what I would prefer to see or hear if that's where it's going. Two weeks is pretty vague. If we're coming back potentially on 28th, I would expect that today is what, the 11th or 12th?
12th.
I would expect that when we, if we in fact continue to that date, that at that point, all operations will have ceased in relation to the commercial operation of that facility, if in fact that's what we do.
Okay.
I'm still a little concerned that you're making that representation on behalf of the applicant and I'm not sure that you have the authority to do that. Do you in fact have the authority as his agent to do that?
I have the authority to file plans and do all of that, so.
You need to make another phone call? It's okay. We got plenty of time. It's only 10 o'clock.
I suppose I can. I've emailed and called. Let me, let's give me another minute or two.
Thank you, sir.
Comment? You tell me what you want and it shall be done. That's all I can say, otherwise then, you know, nothing's going to work. For some reason, I cannot get a whole email or anything. So, in speaking with legal counsel, we would seek your guidance. If you would grant us the two-week continuance with the date certain to cease and desist, then we take that back and we do it. Because obviously if it doesn't happen, then there are other issues. So, that really is, right now, the best I can do.
So, am I to understand that you do not have the authority to go ahead and take this position? You haven't been authorized to do that, is that correct?
Um.
Yes or no? Have you been authorized to do?
I don't, I don't have a written document that says you can make me do this, that, or the other thing.
So, the answer is no, you don't have that authority?
I don't know whether it's a legal authority or not. I've signed so many papers with the authority to do whatever for this project that I suppose I do.
Let me tell you what I have from the property owner, Mr. Glasscock, that's addressed to the county on 11-11-10. It says, "As of the date of this letter, we have retained Steve Pearlman of SP Planning Services to represent us in the Ventura County planning process, and by this communication, he is hereby authorized to act as our agent of record on all matters regarding LU 10-01-08 and CV 10-02-11 and other case numbers as there may be for this property located at 12220 Cothran Road, assessors parcel number 701-0030-100." His contact nation is as follows, and then thank you, Alex Glasscock.
Mr. Pearlman, the lawyer in me says you're the authorized agent. You can do this. Madam Counselor?
I think that that's nice language for applications on a prospective basis because the CUP and the CDP are prospective. They're into the future. What you're asking of the agent and of the applicant is cessation of current activities. That is frankly not before you at this point in time is the violation. So, you're asking for authority of cessation of current activities, whether they be legal or illegal, is a legitimate inquiry. And I don't believe, as powerful as that letter is going on a prospective application, forward-thinking, quote-unquote unfortunate term legalization basis is insufficient for the, what you're seeking, which is a cessation of activities right now. That's just my initial read of what you have before you. So, in two weeks, it would be different because I think Mr. Pearlman would be flanked by his legal counsel and by the applicant himself. And so, all three of them there as a triumvirate could then address all of your concerns right there and then. But at this point in time, I don't think you have this agent's ability to say and bind his client to cessation of current activities. So, I think that what you have before you again is an unusual circumstance. Most cases, as you well know, when there is a violation and planning and the associated RMA agencies go to them and say, "Hey, you've got a violation. Please stop." They do stop and then they come in and run through the process. Here, you have a situation where that has been known and there has been actions in disregard of that advisory and now coming before you for this legalization. So, it is very unusual in that sense. And so, your questions and your request for that authority is legitimate and I think well-founded.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The reason I asked county staff about what we do next, this is what I see. We have an application for a CUP before us. Staff has analyzed it. Staff has made recommended action. Whether or not they cease and desist is the back and forth. What I do see is either we approve or deny, and since we haven't closed the public hearing, I'm not going to say which way I would vote, then the ball then is properly placed with staff to take whatever the appropriate actions are without us being involved. And then the applicant also then has their remedies, which is to appeal based on the disagreement with the conditions or whatever that may be. So, they have a remedy available to them during that process. But for us to sit here and try to, who's got legal authority to cease and desist and back and forth, I'm uncomfortable putting the county in that position at this time. I'd rather either give them a thumbs up, thumbs down, and then let the appropriate remedies available to the applicant be there and also allow the staff to move forward, whether it's through the district attorney or their own processes. So, unless the applicant and there's other public, I would like to move to close this and make a deliberation at that time. That's kind of where I'm coming from right now. And I think it's now just properly defaulted by the black and white here.
Other comments before we make this motion? Paul?
I'm ready to discuss, to discuss. I think we're going to close the hearing.
Okay, all right. This pertains merely to the request for continuance. Do we have a motion? Hearing none, seeing none, no continuance. Let's proceed. Sir, are you ready to continue or are you through for the day?
No, we'll, if you want, give me one more minute to check and then I'm ready to go.
Go ahead, sir. Wait a second.
Chair Onstott, I think that probably.
Sir, just a minute, Mr. Pearlman.
For cleaner record, rather than not taking no action on the request for continuance, I think there's something affirmative should be on the record.
Move to deny the continuance and proceed.
Second?
I have seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
There's no way, you know, it's a health and safety issue. You're right, Mike. There is nowhere to go.
Can I just ask you a question?
Certainly.
I'd like to ask you a question. Did you get Exhibit 13, which is an email from the fire inspector with regard to the fire safety issues? Did you get a copy of Exhibit 13?
I don't know if we actually marked it as 13 yet. Have we marked, have you marked, Madam Clerk?
It's from John Dodd?
I'm sorry, no, I just got it now.
Okay, if you would just take a minute, because this seems to contradict what you were saying about all of the fire safety issues had been resolved. If you could just take a minute and look at that and then respond to it?
Yes, this, okay, yeah, I talked to John, to Mr. Dodd that afternoon. And as far as he was concerned, he said he sent an email that everything was approved, which it is, and he was just waiting for final inspections. Now, obviously, the private waters, as I mentioned, the private water system could not be installed until we got through this process. The alarm system has been finalized. I'm not sure I understand that, but I think what he means there is that the fire alarm system continually, for some reason, the, it is going to the fire department instead of to the camp first. I think that was the issue. Fire sprinkler system, the, he told, has not been filed. He told me that the revised system for the Foremans Building and the utility building, which has always existed, was done. The staff residence, no, we have the 126 form. And so, this is a little different than what he told me, although all plans are approved. So, this is a little different than he told me. Do you want me to go through the conditions as I see them?
Sure presentation, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'll start with number two. This is in your page two and three of the staff report for LU 10-01-08. I'm not sure what is meant by, under documentation, number two parentheses, tree protection and landscape plans. I have been doing large projects for a long time and I'm not sure what that means. We filed an arborist report, biological report and all of that that says, and again, we don't have a copy and I don't have a copy for you, is that actually the oak trees are absolutely gorgeous. There's an email from a long time ago saying that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't find where you are so I can get on this page.
All right, okay. I'm on page two of LU 10-01-08.
Page two of how many pages?
I have 38 in mine. This is a copy I got. It's draft, conditions of approval. Remember, I got mine all separate, so they may not be the same as yours. I don't know.
I believe it's on page 174 of your package.
Oh, okay.
So, it's the requirement under item two, required improvements for CUP?
Yes, yes.
And you said you're not sure what what means?
Okay, it says, "The permitee shall submit additional plans to the planning division for review and stamped approval for inclusion in the project file, such as tree protection and landscape plans." I'm not sure there are any landscape plans. All the oak trees are there. We have an oak tree report that we filed. So, I need some direction as to exactly for what extent, what part of the property. I don't know. So, that's the first thing. I can go through all of them or?
Yeah, I'm not sure how you want us to, do you want us to respond to them as he goes through them or wait till he goes through the list? Because the condition clearly says as necessary. It's a standard condition. If they're necessary, if you need a landscape plan, we require it. If we don't, we don't.
That seems a reasonable way of handling it. Then we'll have both sides and not have to refer back. So, go ahead, sir, and if you'll respond.
Timing on pay top, the next.
Well, does that satisfy you then from a perspective of needing certainty in the language that it's as necessary? Is that something that you're, that you still are troubled by or?
In this context, I, when you have a standard industrial or commercial project, it's pretty obvious. I don't know, I really don't know as necessary what that might mean down the road. I really don't. You know, so that's my concern about it, so.
Do we have some kind of, something in mind when we talk about as necessary, what landscaping might?
Yeah, excuse me, Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Dukas. Yes, typically, if the conditions specifically, if any of the conditions in the permit call out, you need to submit a plan to demonstrate satisfaction of the requirements of the condition. Yes, we request it, but we're not going to ask for a plan, obviously, that doesn't pertain to your project. So, if, for example, landscaping is required, you must submit a landscape plan in accordance with the Ventura County landscape guidelines. We would review it according to those guidelines. If there's a plan that's required, for example, to satisfy biological mitigation measure, you got to map out resources, we need to see that plan as part of your mitigation plan. But those will be specified in the specific conditions that apply to that issue.
And he's got 37 parking spaces and we have standards for shade trees over parking. So, does his, would he have to have a plan for that, those parking spaces and to end shade?
Yeah, so that's a good example. If you need a landscape plan which demonstrates, to demonstrate that you comply with the requirements of the code or the landscape guidelines in this.
So, are you familiar with those standards that the county recently adopted with regard to landscaping in parking areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, can we check off number two?
Okay.
13 more to go?
Well, there may be more. Mr. Chair, but before you go too far, I'm just trying to help you a little bit. It helps me. So, if I got this clear in my mind, we're going to have conditions and then staff will make a determination whether or not they apply in this particular situation. What will staff provide the applicant? A letter or a statement that, because I can understand your concern, there's a condition here that may not apply, so why do we have it?
But it doesn't.
No, 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 that's not my question.
Right, right. So, to give you an example, excuse me, Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Wesner, so take a look in your commission packet, page 184. Condition 19, landscaping and screening. If you read through that, particularly if you flip to page 185, documentation is in that portion where you see that they need to submit the landscape plans and we review that in compliance with the landscape design guidelines. That would be one example of when we would ask for additional plans. Many times what happens though is the plans that they've already submitted, excuse me, applicants have submitted for our review, those will suffice for like the building plans. We don't need additional plans. But specific plans that have not been submitted and are required to be submitted in order to demonstrate compliance with the condition need to be submitted. So, the applicant could go through each one of the conditions, read to see what the requirements are. If at that point they have questions, they can contact us and we'll explain to them what is required at that point.
So, this provision, this number two references some specific condition and a requirement there, and it's, so this is just a general provision?
Yes, it's our standard condition just stating that. The purpose of it is that we need plans in our file that we can check against to make sure that the project's going to comply with the code or whatever requirements apply to the project.
Okay, so there is no, okay, so he can be assured of the fact that it's a specific reference to a specific condition? If it's not in the CUP, there's not going to be something pulled out of the blue?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
But if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is where, as an applicant, I would be a little confused. How would I know number 19 and number two? I understand staff understands that. But if I'm at the counter, now I've, do I have a complicated situation that's over 19 over Rule 2 or 2 is over 19? And is there another? I'm just trying to, understanding Mr. Pearlman's confusion is what I'm trying to say.
Number 19 was another one. And the reason for it is where do I go? Where do I go? So.
In other words, if I don't satisfy 2, but I satisfy 19, is not too satisfied? Or if I, you see where, I would get confused, all right?
In that situation, applicants are more welcome to discuss this with us and we'll clarify the issue for them. We could revise the language of the condition if you like to specifically call out each and every condition, but then from a drafting perspective, you got to understand that then you're cross-referencing conditions within conditions and then you've got to keep track of all those and that becomes very, you know, it's challenging. So, what we do is we have the standard condition that says, okay, you need to comply with the hearing exhibits. And then second, if there are any plans that are required pursuant to the conditions of the permit, you need to submit those to us for our review. So, that's, that was the intent, but.
So, is this an example of the conflicts that you were saying perhaps?
Yes, yes.
So, is there a conflict between 2 and 19 in your mind?
Yes.
How can we, how can we seek to remove any conflicts?
I guess I would still like to hear the conflict with 19 because as I said, these are standard conditions. And I believe that Mr. Pearlman was on the team of people through the Get to Excellence Plan that reviewed them, right? So, these conditions are used day in and day out and they're not meant to be confusing. They're actually meant to say that at the time of the hearing, your permit may be denied, right? It's a discretionary permit. So, we're not going to make you get full landscape plans. You can have conceptual landscape plans, but in order to effectuate the conditions, you need to get full stamped landscape plans. So, they're meant to say at this point for environmental review, we need a certain level. But if you get approved and in order to effectuate your permit, you may need a different level, right? So, this is all of this condition is meant to say, and it's frankly the first time I've heard it challenged. So, I mean, it's interesting, Mr. Pearlman's perspective, and I guess taking that, I'd like to read it differently and maybe I could work with Steve to work out the language, but it is a standard, one to choose every day hearing the permit.
That's true. And this says, "If future landscaping is proposed." Okay. Then if it's not, it's not. But that is a problem with standard conditions and I understand where going. You know, we knew a Mission Rock Road, you had to do each one of the, this is different. So, but that's why I wanted to work these out ahead of time, but we, if, we'll try and work them out. I will, I guess we'll just kind of leave it at that for now.
How are we leaving it at that?
Well, I guess that.
We're having a hearing right now and we're trying to address the concerns that you have with regard to which ones are conflicting or which ones need explanation. So, do you need a minute to look between 2 and 19 to see if they are in conflict still in your mind and if you'd like to propose some language to change them and we can consider them?
Again, I haven't had the time to do that specifically to this particular case. That's all I'm saying and that was why I wanted that extra time. We could work it out ahead of time, but now we'll work it out after the fact. So, we'll proceed on that basis, if that's okay.
Continue, sir.
Okay. I do not know, and I think this may or may not be more legal than I am capable of, and I have not got legal counsel response back, on the next item, which is timing. To me, it's confusing. I'm not quite sure.
Is this number seven?
This is, no, this is still number two under timing, which starts out prior to the issuance of the zone clearance for construction. And then it says, "Unless the planning director and public works allow the permitee to provide financial security and a final executed agreement." I'm just, I'm not really quite sure and I think that's more legal than I can hash out. That was a question I would have for staff. I don't know what this means. And.
Yes, go ahead.
Could I direct that to county council? What that means from the county's point of view, what that condition regarding timing on number two is, what it means?
Through the chair to Commissioner Dukas's question, I understand Mr. Pearlman having some concerns with the second sentence in the timing paragraph that reads, "Unless the planning director and public works director allow the permitee to provide financial security and a final executed agreement approved as deformed by county council that ensures completion of such improvements, the permitee shall complete all requirements, improvements prior to occupancy." So, unless is the exception to the general rule of the permitee shall complete all required improvements prior to occupancy. That's how I read it. So, the exception is a bonding requirement from, based on that simple reading of financial security and a final executed agreement as approved as deformed by those three parties, the planning director, public works director and county council. And we do that very often.
So, is this a performance bond requirement?
Yeah.
So, is that clear to Mr. Pearlman?
Are you saying that we can occupy prior to the zone clearance for construction?
Commissioner Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This provision is designed to allow flexibility to applicants if they cannot. If they cannot, for whatever reason, satisfy a condition regarding development of plans or any requirements of any of the conditions of approval of the permit, they would have the option, if the planning director of the public works agency, as appropriate, could allow them to post a bond in lieu of satisfying the requirement at the time set forth in the condition. So it's designed to give applicants the flexibility to, you know, satisfy the condition later in time if they can work it out. It's really about flexibility.
So it's within your discretion? Assuming it's not a health and safety.
If they had a landscaping plan, right, and they couldn't, they couldn't order, they couldn't get the size from the nursery of the two big oak trees and that, we wouldn't want that to stop them from having occupancy of their use. We would say, well, you can bond for those oak trees and you can put them in in six months when they arrive, right? But we're not going to let you, you know, we want you to open your business and we're not going to stop you on something so small, but we want to make sure our condition is effectuated. That's what that is there for.
So do you still have concerns regarding that?
No, I thank you for the explanation.
So it's clear and you agree to that?
It's clear, yes.
Eleven more.
Keep up the good work.
I just want to say, sir, I have a lot of admiration for you for keeping your cool for this.
It's one of the pleasures of doing business. Okay, moving right along. After issuance of zone clearance for use inauguration, which is 7B, part I. Again, I don't know what page it's on for you, so, because I don't have what you have.
Is that time limits use inauguration, the approval decision for this CUP?
It says after issuance of zone clearance for use inauguration, this use granted by this CUP will expire on April 12, 2022.
What is that?
I'm not finding.
Conflicted.
Hang on. We're not with you.
Is that, this is, I'm on page five of the conditions. And I don't, like I say, I don't know what page that is that you have.
Excuse me, Mr. Pearlman, there are two sets of conditions, so you have to specify.
This is still all, this is all LU 10-0108, that's all I'm talking about.
Page 177.
177.
I see it. Page 177BI.
You're right.
So we're, so that we're on the same page. You've got page five of 39 is your copy?
Mine has five of 38.
We've got to have the same document, come on. Help us here. Is there, is there some phantom set of conditions that?
Or an earlier set?
Yeah. Yes, staff.
Your commission has the correct draft conditions for the project. It has a five-year permit limit and expires in 2017. I had given Mr. Pearlman the conditions prior to and believe we revised them after I gave it to him, so, where there was some conflict with the numbering. But it is the right time period to end April 12, 2017.
Excuse me just a minute. Mr. Pearlman, have you seen this document?
Which document?
The document we're referring to now, staff document that's been presented to us that has been handed to you. Is this something different than you have seen?
Obviously it's something different. It's never different.
Yeah, I believe that it is probably different because in, there's a staff report. I didn't get the full package. I had to go online and get bits and pieces. So the, I believe in an addendum or in part, if I'm, part F, Planning Commission Options, it says, oh, you can do this, 2017, I think. So that's why I'm saying I'm conflicted because did you do that? Are you going to do that? I have conditions, let's talk about 2022. So I want to make it clear that we all have the same conditions. So.
Could staff respond to what he just said so that I'm not completely lost?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I'm there also, we're talking about Exhibit 5, Condition 7B.
I.
One and two, I guess, as it relates to expiration of CUP. That's my understanding.
Yes, that is an error in his conditions. I did also get, provide Mr. Pearlman with the link to the website with the full Planning Commission staff report that you also received with the appropriate date of 2017.
Mr. Pearlman, when did you, when did you receive what you have?
I picked it up Thursday, like 3:00, 3:30.
On April 5th, I think you believe.
On, yeah, the April 5th. And then I was told that the staff report would be on on Friday morning at 10 o'clock. I got a phone call that said, hey, it's on, it's 6 o'clock on Thursday night, so.
Your last page, you said you have 38 pages on yours, is that correct?
Yes.
What is the last thing on yours? Page 38. Condition 62?
Yes.
Okay. So we're missing a page.
I did find in, in the staff report, and this is reason I recall, under Planning Commission Options, which is sort of now my page 29 of 33 of that particular document, which somewhere in there, I recall, yes, okay, you have the option, it seems, although it's not really what it's written, but the condition limits the effective term, 7B effectively limits the term to five use. But that's not the conditions I received. But I had to go online to get the staff report and read the whole thing to find out that that had been changed. So that was just one thing that brings to your mind.
I have a serious problem with the fact that we may not be operating under the same document and it's totally unfair to the applicant. I suppose we can go through those conditions that he can reference that we can track, but I would thereafter continue the matter so that he could review whatever documentation that he would, he needs to get to finalize the situation.
Could you, could you explain again how it has come to be that we have, you know, if it's a clerical issue, that's one thing, you know, with the misnumbering, that's not substantive.
So I gave Mr. Pearlman a copy of the draft conditions via emails and a PDF attachment on April 5th. I also gave him the link to the website, which has the staff report packet that you are looking at right now. So I believe it was just a clerical error that it's April, it says April 12, 2022.
Wow.
So it should say April 12, 2017?
Yes.
Which is what my report says.
Does anybody else find that like a really big difference?
Well.
Yes.
I'm not satisfied. I have a real problem with going forward with this. We can obviously discuss those conditions that he has issues with and thereafter I would at least move to continue the matter, to allow him an opportunity to address what is obviously our document. I don't know what else to do.
Is it?
I don't want to continue the matter with health and safety issues.
Yeah. County Council, does this strike you as something substantive or something that we can just move through? I'm kind of thrown.
I just wanted to give you direction. Rather than address your question directly, Commissioner Dukas, through the chair, is again to look to the Planning Commission staff report, which I think what I've been hearing is everyone has that. And if you look at page 39 and 40 of your Planning Commission staff report, that is the section of the staff report that speaks to the very condition that Mr. Pearlman was trying to articulate, which is the use inauguration and the permit life. And it is clearly set out in that document what those conditions are. And on my page 40 of the Planning Commission staff report, it clearly states that the perempty has a CUP that expires on April 12, 2017. So maybe rather than go through a CUP conditions, point by point, we can concentrate on the Planning Commission staff report, which I think is in agreement. We all have that and we can talk about that issue. Because as he's already indicated, he's looking at Section F of the Planning Commission staff report. He has that and he acknowledges that it is what it is. So that is an appropriate place to have a common discussion. And still, as Commissioner Wesner has already indicated, you reserve the right to continue the matter on other things. But it seems clear to me that we are all looking at the same condition on page 40 of the Planning Commission.
Okay, I'm looking at page 31 of 33, Condition 7B shall expire April 12, 2017. I don't have a page 40.
You're.
It's consecutively numbered, Mr. Pearlman.
The Planning Commission has a packet that's numbered from beginning to end. So you're right, that is page 31 of 33.
But that is different than the conditions. That's my only point.
Mr. Chair.
It's a pleasure.
I am concerned and particularly given the applicant's rights, that we're working off the same documents. And his claim is that he did not receive the documentation in sufficient time. Staff has properly noticed that, I believe, he had received some of these conditions in January 24th and then again here. But at the same time, confusion has arisen here on these documents. If we're going to request him to adhere to these documents, then we have to be clarity on what document that is. Now, I assume County Council, when he said staff report, that it's incorporated by reference, but I'm a little, staff goes to deal with the applicant, they're going to use the conditions as approved, not by reference, which will create you a knowing headache. Now, we haven't gotten down the road with the other ones he's concerned about, but I think it's surfaced to me that there's a sufficient question. We're not operating on the same page, we're lacking a better term.
Well, I concur with that analysis. And the only problem I, just speaking generally, the only problem I have with continuance is the fact that we've got health and safety issues. As a matter of course, even when we ruled today, we'd have those same issues because this doubtful it shut down.
Let's just, let's just keep going, so.
I'm not sure that that's what I want to do, given the fact that we're not necessarily sure we're operating on the same documents and his complaints is.
Chair, on Scott. I did just confirm that, so it looks like Christina Rosari had given Steve a copy on the very same day, but the only difference in that condition, she's telling me the very one change was this one change, right? The difference between giving them a five-year permit, which was my recommendation, versus the 10-year permit, which is what they asked for. So the difference of Mr. Pearlman having that one condition change in his hands a few hours earlier than what was on the staff report and what is clearly in the staff report and was clearly in the conditions of the permit, if that's the only issue, I just wanted to be clear that that's the only thing that we were discussing because I did step out of the room for a second.
That in combination with our not being able to get on the same page is what got me very confused. I want to make sure that, that we are doing exactly what Commissioner Wesner said, is that we have, we literally are, are all on the same page. So is there, is there a way that you can move forward? If, I understand your disappointment that you're getting five years instead of 10 years. That's a disagreement, but we can still go through with this mechanical, you know, process?
We can if you want. I have, well, I have a hearing this afternoon in Orange County, which I'll probably miss, but that's beside the point. My concern is that I don't believe, I can do it because I come before you a lot. I've had 60, probably 60 hearings in the county over the past 20 years. I know what it is. But when an applicant first comes to Ventura County and he's got to hunt and peck to find out that, oh, it's a clerical error, then give, give kind of the applicant a little bit of assistance here. I've had conditions where they're all listed. Here's what you have to do. It's condition 2, condition 7A, condition 9B. This is what you have to do in this timeframe. Here it is. Go look for it. Normally, I don't really review the staff report too thoroughly until after I've understood all of the conditions. And I understand the conditions and then I go and then luckily, if you read, I think there were 240 pages online, you read all that and then there's this line. And it says, and I said, wait a minute, I remember it was different than that. So that's my, that's my concern. I can continue on, but I just want to voice that for the record, that that is a big concern I have about how the conditions are written. And I'm ready to move on if.
It's a pleasure, the commission.
I agree with Commissioner. Let's move on unless it just becomes overwhelming. If nothing else, even if we continue, there's a basis for the discussion for staff. But just note, I'm concerned.
So am I.
But I'd like to continue.
Anyone else?
No, no.
Please continue, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we'll let that run ride. That's okay. Okay, all we have, all the biological, we have already said that we agree to and also, let me just find as I go through here. Okay, I think the next one I have is 37. 37. Now, I discussed this.
Excuse me a minute, sir.
Okay, it's condition number 37 of LU 10-0108, but I don't know what page yours is on.
25, 39. 197.
197.
197. Grading permit?
Grading permit. I know what it means, but if I were an applicant, it would scare me to death. I talked, I was able on Friday to talk to the counterperson, Donna, I think, and she agrees that it's not written correctly. It says, under requirement, the perempty shall submit a grading plan showing existing and proposed elevations to Public Works Agency. If a grading plan is, a grading permit is determined to be necessary, and then you go down to documentation, if a grading permit is required. And my point was, what do you mean? I have to do a 40-acre grading plan for what exists or what, what are we talking about? And she said, no, 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 it's only any new work. But if I were to read this, and they agree, this is not written correctly. So I just want to bring that up to your attention. I know what it is and I, basically on all these, I will probably submit some kind of written response just to make sure that we're all on the same page. But that is, that is a concern. They're aware of it. Whether they're going to change it or not, I really don't know.
Well, let's, let's follow up on that. Is there, from a planning perspective, is there a difference between necessary and required? And is there a way to clean up that language so that the meaning is more clear?
You know, I would be hesitant about asking a counter technician whether they believe that the county standards, conditions that have been written by that agency and reviewed by County Council, right, whether they believe that to be correct or not. I would be happy to bring up the issue. If the issue is simply the terms, if a grading permit is required versus if a grading permit is deemed necessary, I'd be happy to bring that up and with the Public Works Department, Jeff Pratt, and ask him if he wants to change that language to make that more clear and then we would change it in our standard conditions if that's all we're talking about. Happy to do that.
Mr. Myers agreed, and I believe he is the grading person. He agreed that, he said, Steve, you know what it is, so, but, okay.
So would an additional sentence in the condition be? So would an additional sentence in the condition be, would that be helpful in explaining that and making it more clear?
Yeah, I think, I think for everyone in the future, I think that Public Works should modify that.
We just, we just have this one in front of us.
Fine, yes, I would like to see that. That would be fine.
So would, what would your suggestion be for additional language to make that clearer for your client?
I think under documentation, use that if a grading permit is required. Or strike that first sentence and if a grading permit is determined necessary, a state license. That's all.
You got it?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk to Jim Myers and I'm sure it's not going to be any problem to say if a grading permit in the first sentence under the requirement, if a grading permit is required, instead of an all-strike, the words determined necessary.
And, and we can do that?
Well, I can chat with him in just a couple of seconds here. But if Mr. Pearlman said he's already spoke to him about it and he didn't have an issue with it, then I'm sure he won't.
So what are we doing for language?
She's going to check.
All right. That's a comeback, too. Okay. Ready to move on, Mr. Pearlman?
Okay. Condition 38 drainage plan and condition 46. I think it's 46. Okay. Um, I would just like to make it clear for the record that we have an approved infiltration trench. I want to make, I wanted to make it clear, and I did want to talk to, I haven't had a chance, they're very hard to get a hold of. I did want to talk to hydrology that talks about here, about drainage plans and hydraulic, hydrology and hydraulic calculations to address the following areas. I've had this before and we've had a problem going back in saying, well, oh, well, it's this, or it's this, or it's this. And I said, we don't know. So what I want to do is, if nothing else, at least for the record, state that I am looking at, since I haven't gotten a response from them, that the drainage plan regarding number 38 and the infiltration trench on number 46, that's what we're talking about. That's already approved. I have approved plans for that. I just want to make sure that's what we're talking about. That was a question I would, I would want to ask them.
Then, then let's get an answer.
Okay.
In regards to the condition 46, which is the infiltration ditch, I spoke with Evelina Mutkaska, who is the, one of the managers in the watershed protection district. And she has informed me that the, usually when we have conditions from the other agencies, they provide a memo of completeness of the condition. And I have not received that from Evelina yet. And when I checked with her, she said that that has not come, the plans have not been approved yet, so.
So indeed, 38 and 46 are not referring to the same thing?
That is, if those are the numbers he has on his.
I'm assuming he's talking 38, 46.
Are you referring to what the connection is between them or whether they've been completed or not?
What, what he was, what his understanding was, it seemed to me that there, there was some confusion on whether this drainage plan and all that goes with that condition number 38 and condition 46, the verification of the infiltration trench maintenance, if that were the same issue.
I cannot 100% answer that question because I'm not in, in those departments, but they are from two different agencies under Public Works, so.
Okay, well, we need some clarification.
We have Jim Myers here from the Public Works Agency to address that issue.
Excellent.
Just to confirm to you, this is Jim Myers from our grading department and he manages that section. And I did ask him about condition 37 grading permit. And he doesn't have any issues with us changing the word from deemed, determined, necessary under the requirement section to is required.
Good to know.
So cross that one off our list.
Make a check on. No, I have learned. I have Jim Myers with Development Services, Public Works. I didn't hear the question, so.
I'll, I'll repeat the question. Mr. Pearlman had confusion between the two conditions. He was questioning whether the conditions with, on number 38, the drainage plan, and condition 46 regarding the infiltration trench, if that was one and the same thing, and how those conditions related and if there was any conflict. Am I, am I stating your concern accurately, Mr. Pearlman?
Yeah, I, yes, I think so. When we were going through the completeness process, and this was going through watershed, we went through at least three rounds of calculations because we were not able to meet with them. So we kind of just tested the water to see if we could get it right. And third time was the charm, we did. And that was part of watershed protections completeness memo, which I didn't bring with me, but it's in the document. That's the reason we're complete, that yes, this infiltration trench is for water runoff for the proposed pool. And I, again, I have on the drainage itself, overall, I would like clarification, that is, again, if, if we need something else, because that was the only thing they required entirely, was that one infiltration trench on that one item. As I read drainage plan and I know that I speak often over at Public Works, that when it says permee shall submit drainage and hydraulic plans which are prepared by an engineer for review and approval, I'm, I'm a little, I just want to make sure that if there's any, if the condition is acceptable, or we make it acceptable, that I'm not walking into something that I have six and a half acres I got to do, or 40 acres I've got to do, or that I got to do something with all the biological habitats we're giving to the county or whatever it is. I just want some clarification. That's all I'm asking for. I don't, I don't understand that condition. Again, if I were on a simple or a traditional commercial or industrial project, I could figure it out. But this is different. This is a lot different. And that's the reason I'm bringing these things up. So that's the clarification that I'm looking for.
Is there any reason why we can't just limit the scope?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Condition 38 is sort of a general condition that you have to turn in a drainage plan for your project and address all the issues that are incorporated into the design manuals. Condition 47 is one tiny component, 46, excuse me. Condition 46 is a component of that project and its specific requirements of the watershed protection district. So there's no conflict between the two of these. And condition 38, it says you have to turn in a drainage plan that would be subject to review and approval by the appropriate agency, Public Works. And so I don't understand the.
I guess he's saying, are we talking about 40 acres or six?
Or anything.
Well, he's been required to turn in a final drainage plan for the project. And so the applicant prepares that plan, turns it into the county, and it's reviewed and approved, or reviewed for adequacy and approved. So, so I'm not sure, we can't retool this condition at this point because the applicant hasn't done the work.
Do you have a response to that, Mr. Pearlman?
I didn't say I'm flummoxed. I just, I have not heard that we need any additional drainage plan work. We had two things that we did, two things that we have proposed. One we did, one we proposed. And that was the disturbance of 4,000, of 5,000 square feet or more, or we were under that. So that was the infiltration trench. The other is we put in, that don't require building permits, but they do require zone clearance, is we put in four storage sheds that were looked at in that completeness memo as that, that we didn't require anything because that was already disturbed area, it was flat. So what I'm saying is, if, are we talking about that? Are we talking about specific? Or do I have to go through six and a half acres and start over from all the terrain that has been there since last 30 or 40 years? I don't know. That's something that, this is the first time that anybody has ever brought that up to me, at least.
Mr. Baca, yeah.
Yeah. If, if that is their proposal, that they're going to only address certain areas of the site, they can submit that to Public Works and if they find that acceptable, it'll be acceptable. So, so it's, this, this is the kind of thing where they propose and Public Works reviews. And if they decide that there's some aspect of the site that needs to have additional drainage analysis or, or facilities, then they will impose it. But that's not really a subject for today and, and the condition as it sits stands, and it merely subjects the drainage plans to review and approval by County Public Works.
And, and really, that makes sense to me because we're not experts in draining. We wouldn't know how to confine it and how, you know, what, what needed to be looked at and what didn't. You know, it's the whole project. And these things actually are pretty standard.
Okay, I just learned, I just learned something new. Okay.
Would you share with us?
I will, I will. I would be glad to. Mr. Myers just brought up that in the MND, there's a page, I guess it's your page 116, talks about that 4,000 square feet that I was talking about. And we got approval from, as I was telling you, all those calculations we did from watershed, but apparently it was never sent up to Mr. Myers. So now that I know that, I will personally hand carry a copy of the completion to him. Okay.
Let's move on.
Let's.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers, if, since we brought you all the way down here.
Sure.
25 words or less, how would you relate 38 and 46? Because it raised a concern. Well, 38 is my condition and it, and my concern is that the increase in runoff due to increased rooftop or paving needs to be controlled and reduced down to natural or existing. I believe the watershed protection district condition is regarding the quality of surface water quality and, and that the swimming pool, I guess, doesn't wash down and like that doesn't carry off pollutants. Okay, so when you review 38 and code enforcement cites him for 46, what's going to happen? Well, 46 would be. Controlling. Watershed Protection District. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I would like to just mention number 40, road improvements. Again, LU 10-0108. I had discussed this with Transportation and was assured that it's their policy. So the only thing I responded to, Madam Commissioner, was that I didn't particularly like Part E that was open-ended, that says, oh, well, you're going to bond in perpetuity. And I didn't think that was fair. But they assured me that everybody gets that condition in the Yorba Buena area. And so I asked for some examples. And I'm still waiting, so I haven't received any. But I, if that, this is a policy, it's a policy. Others must have had it and I would feel better if I'm not the only one out there. And then one of the other things that I responded to in the MND was there was an error that I pointed out that said, this is a rural road and it must be improved with curb, gutter and sidewalk. So, but that's, that was incorrect. And I pointed that out in the MND responses. And so I will go along with the fact that there is a rural road plate that says no curb, gutter and sidewalk. And that, that was the reason that you saw that road improvement issue that I brought up that I didn't particularly care for because it was so open-ended. And I, and nobody else I know ever has got, has received this particular condition, so I wanted to know.
And that's condition 40?
40.
Road improvements?
Right.
And it was item E?
Item E.
And it says, what about in perpetuity?
Well, I just have to put up a bond and for whatever. And I don't know what it would be for. Are they going to design it? Are they going to pick a number out of the air? What, how does that work? I had written a letter to Transportation and have not really received an answer as to how it would work. It's just, you know, we'll figure it out if it needs to be done. You signed this. So that was.
Could we, could we have follow-up from staff regarding item 40E? And, and I'm interested in the fairness issue as well.
Yeah, this is a standard, excuse me, Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Idukus. You really need to back up and look at the requirement section. And you can see that these road standards are adopted by ordinance, by the board. And the applicant has two options, either make the improvements or you bond for the improvements. And then if or when the county does actually build out according to the road plate standards, they will then use that money to go ahead and do the improvements across the project site frontage. So that's how it is. In some cases, I'm not saying that this necessarily will occur within this case, but in some cases, the county standards will change, they no longer will have the same requirements and they'll release the bond or collect whatever's required, given the new standards. But at this point, all they need to do is either, you know, install the improvements, pursue it to the road standard, or bond for it.
And is this something the county has done in other instances?
Yes.
And the improvements are specific?
Yes. Once again, go to the requirement and there's reference to the road plate standards. And then actually, in subsection A, you can see it's road standard plate B7B. You can actually pull those up online and take a look at them. They have all the dimensions and engineering requirements for it.
Okay. I just, for the record, want to let you know that our road is along an area that we are dedicating for biological habitat. So more than likely, it will never happen, but I want everybody to know that that's, that's what we've got. And I do not know how the number would come up. Yes, you can say, okay, it costs X amount of dollars to widen the pavement by X number of feet, but how many retaining walls are you going to need? What are you going to do about the biological habitat, all that? Are we going to get stuck with that? All I'm doing is saying for the record that I have a little problem with that.
So how do you see resolving that?
I don't know. Get rid of the.
Mr. Chair.
Get rid of the.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Idukus, if they choose the bond option, then there would be an engineer's estimate that would go along with the bond option for the cost of doing the required road improvements. So it's not a guess out of the air. A licensed engineer would have to prepare an estimate.
Do we have anything that's similar in size and scope so that he can have some degree of certainty of how, what size of the bond he's going to have to get?
We'd have to get somebody from the Transportation Department down here to, to ask them about that. Although I did hear Mr. Pearlman say that he just wanted to bring it to your attention. Although, I did hear Mr. Proman say that he just wanted to bring it to your attention, that he had talked to the Transportation Department, and they have assured him it's a standard condition, and then he's asked for samples of where they've done it on Yorba Buena before.
And I would like, and I also asked them as to how would they improve it along our particular road? Because we discussed the fact that there is going to be biological habitat and huge retaining walls or cutting away of mountains. Now, yes, there would be an engineer's estimate. Do I pay for the engineer's estimate to do all of this work? So, I don't have an answer.
Is that something that the applicant has to pay for, is the engineer's work?
Yes.
Do you have an idea of how much that is?
No, I don't have an idea. We can, I mean, we can ask the, somebody from the Transportation Department to come down as we move through the conditions.
You're not interested in a final number? You just want a ballpark, is, am I correct, Mr. Proman?
That would be good, considering what the terrain is and what our other requirements are in this particular CUP, like the mitigation measures, the biological, and all those other things. Yes, I would like some guess, good guess.
Chairman, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Idukus, I believe Mr. Proman talked about dedicating biological habitat areas or having areas in a restrictive covenant. That wouldn't include the road. The road's in an easement that's already sitting there, and so, I assume that most of the improvements would be in the existing road easement. And you couldn't be dedicating a road easement for biological habitat anyway. So, there's not going to be a conflict where biological habitat will be taken out for road improvements.
So, just to, just to follow up on that thread then, will someone reach Transportation and come up with some kind of ballpark figure in the next few hours? Very good. Okay, I think we're down to single digits.
Hang on a second.
Maybe not.
Yeah, we are.
I've got a question for-
Oh, okay.
Mr. Baca. You said that wouldn't impact biologicals, but if this, the road now is currently 17 and the standard is 32, and they expanded it, would, would it not?
By merely saying that if there is a biological habitat that's part of a set aside, a restrictive covenant, it wouldn't extend into the road easement. So, there's already, there are plants growing wherever there isn't a road in the road easement, I assume there's plants growing. So, there would be some effect, but it wouldn't be something where it would be a violation of their conditions. It's already plants that are in an existing road easement.
So, this road just leads to the camp, and that's it?
No, it leads up Cothran, and then it keeps going back up.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I don't recall, excuse me, question, Mr. Chair. How much frontage are we talking about?
Well, that's really a pretty good question, because if we're talking about the CUP only, width of the gate, but what are we talking about here? There may be a map up here. Are we talking the entire property, which includes the existing non-CUP ag land? I don't know.
It's Condition Number 40, page 199. Under the requirement, construct 17-foot wide, wrote 17 feet of road pavement along the parcel's frontage.
Right. So-
So, what is the frontage?
I don't, it's a 40-acre piece, to, what, 200? Give or take, maybe more? I don't know, I don't have a plan in front of me.
Okay, so that's, that's the baseline we're working off of.
If it's the parcel frontage, yeah.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I just want to make sure that so far, we have gone through Conditions 2, 19, 38, 46, 39, and 40. I'm just keeping track, given that you said that there were 14?
Well, I said, yeah, 2, 7, 19.
2, 7, 19?
Seven.
I missed one.
Seven. Seven was the date that we looked at.
Okay.
Okay, I have 2, 7, 19, 38, 39, 40, 46 so far. Oh, 37. Sorry. Okay. Number 44. I have not had a chance to talk with Integrated Waste Management yet, but I know this means if you have hazardous waste and all of that. I'm sorry. No, I am not. I've, I've learned. I've, I've been, I've been warned that I can't even be here twice in 24 hours. And that's difficult. So, thank you for that. Thank you for reminding me. But, I'm alright. I've come across this before, used oil recycling in a project or a couple of projects where the project description specifically stated, "We don't have any of that." And then, they said, "Don't worry about it." And then, we get caught later on proving that we don't have it. Now, I don't know if this is really standard, because this is not an industrial, they don't do, they don't change their own motor oil, they don't do any of it. The fact that it's here is one of those things that if it's there, they can catch you on it, for some, whatever. And I would prefer not to deal with it. But, like I say, I have had to deal with this in an adverse situation before, and as a matter of fact, on some, we're still dealing with the fact that we don't have it. How do we prove it? So, you know, again, from my standpoint, I deal with these every day, all day long, sometimes at night, but the applicants and others don't. And so, that's why I'm bringing this one up. And I have not had a chance to talk to Integrated Waste Management. A lot of times, they say, "Oh, you're right, we'll remove it." I have not had a chance to get there.
So, so is, so I'm clear, would you like Condition 44 to be removed?
I would.
Could staff follow up with that? Is that, is that possible? Is there anything in the record that would indicate that there, there was?
Yes.
Melinda with Environmental Health, although I'm not with Waste Management, I can probably answer that. There may be some chemicals from the food facility in the pool, acids, and other chemicals that are considered hazardous material, and so, I don't believe they would want to remove that condition, because those are hazardous materials. We have chlorine for the pool, there's usually muriatic acid, and possibly chlorine also for the kitchen.
Understood what you're saying, but the, the condition reads that it's with regard to motor oil, oil filters, antifreeze.
Okay, so it's not general to hazardous waste?
That there were commercial vehicles that maybe, may have been serviced on-site? Is there anything in the history of the project that would indicate that those would be there?
I think probably, and I would assume, I can call Pandy Leachman and ask her about that, but I would assume by looking at it, since it was a shuttle business, that perhaps they were thinking that the shuttles might be serviced and maintained-
Yeah.
-up on the site and changing their oil, and that would be a commercial vehicle, and that commercial vehicle's oil would have to be legally removed from the site. I can put those links together by imagining that's what she was thinking.
Uh-huh. So, does that, does that clarify what, I can understand, you don't want to inherit a superfund site, is what you're doing.
Exactly. Exactly. And, and I will tell you, they do not, in this environment, they absolutely do not change oil, they don't do anything to their vehicles on-site. That would not be appropriate to the type of camp, but-
But knowing, but knowing the intent-
I, I will note the intent, thank you.
And, and so, that we've got 44 ticked off. Woohoo!
Let me, let me make a note of that.
Mr. Chair. Question of staff. Question of staff, maybe, Mr. Proman also. This is obviously a, a commercial operation up there, with an awful lot of structures. I have a question about power generators, and the installation or operation of power generators. And I'm not sure, and this is directed at staff, whether 44 is the appropriate place to, to address that issue. I don't see anything, anything at all related to generator operation as an alternate power source. And I can't help but believe that, or assume, that in an operation like that, remotely removed the way it is, that there isn't some, some condition or something in place as it relates to alternate power.
There is, yes.
Would you address that?
There is a generator, yes. I do not know what size, it's not a massive generator, but, you know, the camp, the way it's structured, when, when it's dark, it's over. People are run so ragged that basically, they need to go to bed early, get up early. So, it's light to light, basically. I am unaware of them ever having to use a generator, or whether the lazy Jay before had generators, or what, I do, I do not know. But, I do know they do have a generator. The size and capacity, I don't know. So, I will make note of that as well.
Thank you. Obviously, it's powered by, presumably, gasoline, which would be one of those issues involved here as far as petroleum-type byproduct. And I don't know if this is the appropriate point to address that issue, but I'm assuming that it is. And as a segue to that, I guess, if there is any maintenance schedule to make sure that alternate power source is maintained, that any maintenance operation would occur during daylight hours and, as opposed to nighttime hours, with a potential to create some sort of disturbance, either to the natural, wildlife, or to potential neighbors?
Yeah.
That would also be included in that?
Right.
Any conditions of operation of generators?
Right. I think your point's well taken. There is a, an amount, I think it's like 50 gallons or whatever, below which you do not need a permit. So, while it's not in here, we'll, I'll find it, but that's a good point.
If staff could address that in whatever final disposition is done on this.
So, do you want us to ignore, and I'm trying to look through the fact that there was generators out on the site, because typically, generators are regulated by the APCD, and I don't know if the project description said that there was going to be some generators in the site, do you know? So, I don't think it's an issue that was, that was raised, or an issue that was brought up as part of the review. But, if you are asking if that can be incorporated into Condition 44 to make sure that, you know, the antifreeze and the oil, as well as any gasoline byproducts, can be covered as part of that condition, I'm sure that can be done.
That is what I'm asking. If not 44, Condition 44, then the appropriate condition to accommodate that.
Right. Mr. Baca points out that ABC, that APCD has Condition 34, and we could add the generation, the generator language in that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Can we go back to the, do we have that there's a, is, would a generator of this type be a potentially significant impact in terms of the adequacy of the MND? I see water resources, mineral, surface water, petroleum. Is that, is that something that should have been caught in the mitigated negative day?
Not necessarily. The threshold level is 25 pounds per day of rocks and knocks, and that's pretty hard to reach. So, one generator is not going to reach that, although that one generator will more than likely require the permit to operate from the APCD. So, we'll make sure that that loop gets closed. But, as far as an environmental review, it's not going to reach that threshold.
Couple more.
So, just looking at, going, going way back before Conditions, that we have to, we also have MND before us. So, I found it in Section B, issue is number one, air quality. The omission of, of the generator doesn't, doesn't trigger anything here, just to be clear?
Yeah, just, excuse me, the chair just left.
No, no, that's already handled.
I do, I don't know who to address. The way they run the, the air analysis is first, they have screening tables, and then they, they look at the total air emissions, that's the entire project. And if you're even coming close to exceeding those thresholds, then what they'll do is they'll run the, a model, which will estimate how much air emissions will occur. If after running the model, you're coming close to reaching one of the thresholds, at that point, APCD will request more fine-tuned information, like regarding generators and stuff, to see if, and they'll refine the model, and the inputs in the model see, okay, are you getting close to that threshold? If yes, then, you know, they're going to ask for more additional information. But, the fact that they didn't request that means they're well below that 25-pound-per-day threshold, so.
So, what do you use the generator for?
Emergency. Is this affordable generator?
Okay, alright. Very clear, thank you.
Okay. Point of clarification, I've already talked to Mr. Dodd about this. Number 48, private driveway with the single-family dwellings is probably not appropriate in here, in this one. He said to me, he was going to say that could be eliminated, but I just bring that up. Since the private driveway width for a single-family residence would be the CPD, it might have just been copied in here, or the fire department might have put in here incorrectly. We have all access plans, turnaround plans, and all of that are all approved and everything already. So, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter, but I don't think this really shouldn't be in here, number 48. But, I have approved plans, so.
Could you explain the difference between an approved plan and this memo that these plans have not been finalized? What's the difference between approved and finalized?
Yeah, Commissioner Chair, Commissioner Idukus, what applicants are able to do is they can submit plans to the Fire Protection District, and they'll do a preliminary review if everything looks like it complies with their requirements. They can, I believe they can even issue a permit prior to issuance of the CUP, they can go that far. However, they cannot sign off on it until the, everything's actually been installed, and they can go out and do an inspection. At that point, it's finalized, and they can sign off on it.
Right, that is, that's correct.
So, so this memo, from a planning perspective, is there anything that is, is not consistent with this approval, finalized, and the conditions? Is there anything outstanding?
No, I mean, all this, all Mr. Dodd was communicating is that they haven't, obviously, they haven't installed and inspected all of these features for fire protection yet, and they won't do that until, if or unless the CUP is approved, and they can actually do all this stuff, so.
So, I've forgotten what your point was with number 48, and I've got 48 written down here.
Well, I just got, okay, 48, basically, I don't think needs to be in there. I just, I'm just pointing it out that I don't think it needs to be in there. Like I say, we have all the plans approved, but, so.
Does 48 need to be in there?
You know, I'd actually have to consult with the fire department before I would be willing to want to remove any condition that they placed on it, and I could try to-
Is that, is that satisfying to you?
That's fine, sure, sure.
Okay.
Alright. Final condition, number 54. Again, I've already worked this out with Mr. Dodd, I have an email to the effect. It says, automatic fire sprinklers installed in all structures, that is not the case. There are certain structures that they are required, certain that they are not. For instance, at one time, we had what we called massage huts, and they would have been habitable, so they would have required at 90 square feet or 80 square feet, a fire sprinkler. We are not going to use those anymore, because it's too hard to do that in Ventura County, to do massages. That we are going to use those strictly for storage, and therefore, they will not need sprinklers. So, that, again, I have an email confirmation from Mr. Dodd, and- So that, again, I have an email confirmation from Mr. Dodd, and, uh, I just, I just bring that up.
Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, under the requirement section of that particular condition, we can just change the sentence to, "The permitee shall be responsible to have an automatic fire sprinkler system installed in all structures," and then add at the end of that sentence, "as required by the VCFPD."
That would be satisfactory, thank you. And just to, to conclude, um, this, uh, I, I want you to really understand that, um, hazard abatement, public safety plans, and all of that are there, they've been approved by the fire department, they're all there, all the fire, uh, requirements are already installed, approved, and everything by the, by the fire department. We're just waiting to get clearance to install the water tanks and all of that. And to remember that this, this use is, we're gonna have 40 some odd people maximum during the day and night. Without any of these improvements, Lazy Jay had 170 people overnight, and were allowed to have 759 people during the day, um, with virtually no improvements. So, um, I had submitted that as part of my project description, but I, I think that, that concludes, I do have some problems with some tables and things that I think are incorrect in some of the appendixes and all of that. I did relate that, yeah, as it, as it pertains to the MND, my letters are on file, on the MND on those tables. I received a response back from staff, basically stating that they were not environmental issues, and therefore it doesn't really, I guess, doesn't matter. But anyway, we are on record as showing that those tables were, we feel incorrect. I believe that I will live at this point with the CPD conditions, I don't think there's, well, no, let me, let me back up, as long as, if I have a few more minutes. Just so that you're aware, and it's in my letter requesting continuance, this thing about the basement, the ongoing saga of the basement, um, I just want to bring up, I said I would include it in the CPD, because this has been a sore subject with me since I started this project. The basement was built by William Boyd. All permits have been issued for that. I was informed that potentially, an over-the-counter, um, drywall permit was also needed. I went to building department, and they said, "No, you really don't." I said, "Look, I will pay for it, $67." So, that's why I'm saying a lot of these thing, a lot of these things are already taken care of, a lot of permits done, that they tried to invalidate, they're all done. And, and finally, we are in building plan check for everything. We were held up from filing for two months, we finally were able to file on March 7th. We are in for our waste treatment plant, kitchen remodel, and pool spa as of Tuesday, which we were held up since last October, November, because we were unable, well, there was no process by which to file the treatment plant. And I have an email stream as that. Mr. Peter Bozek has been working with us very closely, and got me the information I needed on Monday.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt for a second. Go ahead, Nora.
I'm sorry, um, to interrupt your train of thought, but we have a staff member here who could, um, estimate that cost. Remember when we were talking about how much your bond would have to be for the road improvement?
Sure, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you. Could we have you step forward and state your name, and the question, are you, do you already know the question?
I, yeah.
Okay.
My name is Ben Imami, I'm in the Public Works Transportation Department. Uh, I just want to, before we go to the details, uh, the conditions of road improvements in there, and then we gave applicant several options to choose. One as option is to improve the road, and the other option is the postponement of the improvements up to 15 years or length of the CUP, whichever comes sooner. So he could actually just agreed with that one, and then don't do any road improvements at all. So, uh, we, most of the time, we were doing that for the roads that we know in next foreseeable future, we will not be able to, uh, bring it to the road standard as required by the ordinance, county ordinance. So, uh, the, the issue of the bond is basically is gonna be not applicable if the applicant chooses not to improve the road.
Okay.
So, as far as how much does this cost, I don't know, I have to go back, check exactly. There, there's a percentage of the improvements, I don't know, 5, 10% of, what were the percent of improvements, that usually they're bonded for if they decided, go ahead and improve the road right now. But if they don't want to, if applicant chooses not to do it, they don't need to do any bond, to do any improvements.
Is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Perman?
That sounds like good news.
Yeah, that sounds very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right.
How about that?
I think I'm, I think I'm done. Uh, I think the LU 110061, as I ran through them, I, uh, I think we're okay on that. And if we can figure out what permits we need, I'd be glad to pull them, so. If there are any other questions, um...
Is there anyone else here to speak on behalf of the applicant, sir? No, okay, go ahead.
Um, you said that the massage huts would be used for storage?
Yes.
Storage of what?
Just, uh, general, uh, site storage. We were gonna, we were contemplating proposing a storage building, but the...
How many massage huts are there?
There are four, and I think they're 84 square feet apiece. They're, they're, they're kits that are brought in, like in a, uh, just set on the ground, like a, like, you can, literally, they're a little better than that, but you can, it's the kind of thing you'd buy at Lowe's or something, only they are more environmentally, visually, better.
Okay.
To, to go along with the environment of the camp.
And so where would the massages occur, since you won't be using these huts?
In the rooms.
In the private rooms?
In the rooms.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. All right, sir, thank you. Is there anyone here opposed to the project? Seeing none. Mr. Perman, do you have anything else you want to add at this point in time?
I forgot where I'm at. Um, no, I, I don't think so. This is a, a great project, and we are moving as fast as humanly possible to get everything done. Appreciate your time, I think we've spent quite a bit of it, and, um, I look to you for, for your help, uh, moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
And your decision, thank you.
Well, then I'll close the public hearing, and open discussion amongst the commissioners.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as we stated before, we have the options approve, deny, modify, or continue. The concern of health and safety is an ongoing one. As I'm aware, and I don't think this is ex parte information, so county council can jump me too bad, is that, uh, the liability insurance this property may or not have, because they are stated in violation, it probably doesn't have protection under it. So the next liable entity would be the county. So I'm concerned about exposure to the county, because now we're on notice, there's a violation. And there's none, a remedy between us, and the problem, if it should occur. So, a continuance at this time, even though I've stated concern over the record and the documents, um, when I queried the applicant about what the last condition was, it was the same one 62. So I can go along with Commissioner Duquesne, said there may have just been some typo errors. What I am prepared to venture forth is to approve this application with modifications to Conditions 37 and 54 that were presented and agreed to by staff, um, and then allow, my thinking on this is then put this in the proper hands, which is county staff, and the applicant, moving forward, whether to cease and desist, appeal, or whatever their appropriate remedies. But that's my thinking at this point in time. I would like welcome consideration from the other commissioners.
Commissioners?
Well, um, this would be directed to the planning director. Could you go over again what approval of, because it's, it's kind of, I, I kind of think, why wouldn't anyone just start building things in the Santa Monica Mountains if they just could go back and get it all legalized? A pool, you know, opening up a hotel, um, why wouldn't anybody do this, if, if this is how easy it is?
Well, I don't, I don't believe that it's easy. It's the, it's the law that they get a conditional use permit, and they are suffering the consequences through the fact that it's a civil administrative penalties, as I heard Mr. Delperdang, Delperdang say, to the tune of $600 a day. So that amount will have to be negotiated and settled with Mr. Delperdang, their bills will have to be paid, and they will have to cease operating until they build everything that they need to build and construct what they need to construct prior to use inauguration. That's gonna be very expensive for them to, perhaps having to install a whole new swimming pool, right? If, if the separation between the, the, the deck is not sufficient, right, that they're going to have to open up some walls, I'm sure, for the building inspectors to look at. So there will be a penalty to pay, both time-wise and money-wise, and in, in addition to the civil administrative penalty that they'll have to settle, and any case that the DA may choose to take up. So it hasn't been to their benefit that they've operated illegally.
So, um, so if we go ahead and, uh, adopt the recommendations of staff, then, um, they would still have to stop operating until they got everything legalized, is that correct?
That is correct, after the 10-day appeal period.
Okay. Have we received any other information from, from affected residents, or clients, or people who in support? Have we got, have we gotten any other communications regarding that?
Planning staff, other, aside from what's in Exhibit 4, response to comments, we have not received any, any which way about the project from the public.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Comments, but can I, have we accepted Exhibit 12 and 13 into, into the record? Make a motion to accept them into the record?
Second.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments. And apparently Exhibit 12 is a printout of the webpage information. Yes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I, just in scanning it quickly, um, on the third to last page, it says, "Can I get hurt?" Under Questions and Answers. And basically, without, without reading the entire thing, it says that, uh, that safety is a top priority, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Should anything out of the ordinary transpire, our staff is professionally trained and equipped to handle a range of medical emergency scenarios, at the same time the instruction, guidance, et cetera, et cetera. It's first and foremost safety of the applicant. I'm troubled, by the way, the applicants proceeded in this entire operation, given the fact that it's a business venture, a fairly expensive business venture, obviously. The complete disregard for any type of applicant, or permit application, to expand on the existing plant that was there at the time. But I think staff has an appropriate handle on it at this time. But there's a couple of things that still bother me, uh, that are included in the conditions of approval in the CUP, in part because they're requested, requested by the applicant. And that is the inclusion of, we're all aware that the client base is gonna be 32, 32 applicants at one time, all will be shuttled up there, and shuttled out at one-week increments with a staff of eight, which presumably will have private vehicles, maybe not. But as I quickly scanned this, this webpage, I envision a potential expansion of operations up there. Given the fact it's a fire area, it's relatively removed from the nearest, uh, first aid response, whether it be fire, or whether it be an air ambulance. I would, I would like to incorporate in the conditions here that the applicant is prohibited from initiating any commercial air operations, or any other operations related to this particular application and activity, with the exception, potential exception of the need to have fire or air ambulance aircraft respond at that location. And that's directly related to those 27 parking spaces out there that really have no explained Is that pretty clear?
Yes.
Good to me.
Do you have, do you want to weigh in on that?
I'm, I'm not sure I heard correctly, uh, the first part.
He doesn't want air transportation to and from site except in an emergency situations.
Air transportation?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
I know it's not before us today.
Right.
But it's not going to begin, because there was an assumption that if air, air ambulances or fire, air, air ambulance aircraft or fire aircraft had previously landed on the site, that it would be all right to have commercial delivery, ingress and egress of clients, or anybody else of that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's ever happened, that's fine, okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez, are you asking that condition be added? Which were the... I am. If it's not appropriate to put it in any existing conditions, then I would ask that condition be added. More?
No, that was, I could make comments, a lot of comments here, but I don't think I made any specific conclusion, but I specifically asked that condition be included.
Paul?
I'm good.
Nora? You want to think about it? I have some comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm particularly troubled by the fact that there was a, just a willful disobedience and a failure and refusal on the part of the owner to abide by the terms and conditions of all county ordinances, and just a willful failure on their part. I understand and appreciate they make $150,000 a week, and there obviously was an election to go forward and do that in spite of the fact they've been ordered to cease and desist. And because of that, I am loath to give them a five-year CUP, I'd give them two years max, and if they came back before us with violations, they would be severely dealt with, as far as I'm concerned. And I would request that we amend the CUP term to two years. That's all.
I, um, is that, do we have a motion to approve the recommended action?
No, we're just, no, we're just talking here.
Okay. Um, and you've, you found that two years was, was doable because...
Because I wouldn't give them any more in light of the history, without having to come back.
Um, from, uh, from the planning director, does, what kind of timeline are we looking at? You know, say, say today, and there's no approval, we, we approve the recommended actions, what kind of timeline would it, are we looking at for use inauguration? It seems to me that it took some time to build all this.
There'd be several ones.
Yeah.
The, the time that they have to use inaugurated is one year. The time that they take to use inaugurated is, is a lot due to, you know, up to them, how fast that they can get it done. I think on the county's end, at least on the planning department, I'm sure for Resource Management Agency, I mean, we would be willing to, you know, take a look at these things very quickly, once they got it in. And, and I think that we've...
And I think that we processed this permit very quickly, once we got it, once we had an application. So, you know, they have a year to use inaugurate, they can have another year, the conditions say if they need more time than that, but, you know, a lot of that, the shortness of that term will be up to how quickly they can perform the work that they need to be done.
Yeah, I share your, I don't know, it's kind of galling. I don't understand why you needed a continuance. It seemed like all of the things that we went through, there were just two extremely minor changes to the conditions. It just...
$156,000 a week.
It doesn't seem that, it doesn't seem that the applicant is operating in good faith, not showing up, asking for a continuance where I couldn't see that one was even needed. Here we are contemplating whether or not to move these. I don't know. I think the two years is a move in the right direction. I don't feel comforted at all that they're going to do what you say they're going to do.
Anybody have anything further?
Just a matter of clarity for everybody. The alternative is to deny the CUP, but my understanding is correct. We'd have to be specific in our findings for that denial. Is that correct, County Council? So if anybody's in that motion, be prepared to be specific in your findings for denial. I just want to put that on the table. Yes, they haven't been good citizens. I don't know if that's sufficient finding.
What would, you know, absent people coming down here saying that, you know, other evidence on which to base a denial, what kind of findings do we have to make if we move for denial?
The findings that are necessary under the code are set forth in the coastal zoning ordinance and are found in your planning commission staff report. So I don't know if there's five in the coastal zoning ordinance, but they're set forth in your package. You'd have to find that they could not meet any one of those findings, or one of any one of those five you'd have to make a finding of. There is a case that may be helpful to you in this regard.
And direct me to the page number where I was finding that.
I'm looking at Pages Coastal Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit Findings, beginning at Page 35, 36, 37, and 38 of your staff report package consecutively paged. You'd have to find that any one of those findings, and yes, there are five of them, could not be met by the facts and circumstances.
So one of five?
Yes. Because you need all five in order to receive that CUP. And you notice that before each one of those findings, there is a prefatory paragraph, and it basically reads, "It's clear that the current ongoing operation of the fitness and wellness camp at the subject site is a public nuisance pursuant to CZO Section 8183-4", which basically says, "Any condition caused or permitted to exist in violation of any of the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed a public nuisance and may be abated as such." So that's clearly an indication, and that's within your record, evidence of a public nuisance. And I think Commissioner Anstott, Chair Anstott articulated that point, that there was, there's evidence of willfulness of not following warnings and advisements of regulatory staff. The case I just wanted to bring to your attention that may help you in this regard is that, it's a case called Lucas Valley Homeowners Association versus the County of Marin. It's a 1991 appellate case. And in that case, the land use decision-maker recognized that there was a possibility, and there was a great fear that the applicant that was before them was going to violate the conditions immediately upon receipt thereof. And the court found that it was well within the decision-making body to adopt stringent review clauses, subjecting the applicant to compliance review and the possibility of revocation within six months of issuance. So I think Commissioner Anstott said two years. In this case, the court found that a six-month timeframe for the pulling of a issued CUP was valid and supported by the evidence in the case. Basically, again, as I said earlier on, this is a prospective CUP. It's looking into the future, so that if they do, all of that's required of them, then they can operate. That's the basis upon which the court ruled. And the fear of future noncompliance is a real one, the court found, and that they could address it through these conditions that you are discussing at this very moment.
So how would that dovetail in with use inauguration if instead of two years, we said six months?
We would have to amend the condition, and I think that that would, you know, we would have to amend the use inauguration permit if, obviously, they may not be able to use inaugurate before their permit would expire. I'm not sure, we don't do package-to-treatment plans every day, right? They're complicated work. I'm not sure if they could get it permitted, and build it, and get it operational, and get use inaugurated in six months. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Pearlman can speak to that.
Okay, well...
We closed the public hearing.
And the conditions include provisions that are quite similar to what Mr. Kwong just talked about, and that is, the conditions specifically say that if you continue to operate after your decision and prior to getting use inauguration, that's grounds for permit revocation.
So that's already in place.
That's in place. And so there's already the ability, at any time after your decision, to evaluate, inspect the site. There's also provision that would allow 24-hour, anytime inspection by county staff to see that they're either operating or not operating, to effectuate this permit as it's currently written.
So the hammer's there.
I understand. I just don't have any feeling of confidence. No disrespect to you, Mr. Pearlman. I think, under the circumstances, you've kept your cool in a very difficult situation with your applicants not showing up for their hearing. But I don't have any sense at all that anything is going to change. I think it's been well demonstrated that they're going to do whatever they're going to do, regardless of what the county says. They haven't been paying their $600 per day since May 23, 2011. What really pricked up my ears was the outside locking of the doors. Remember that testimony? I think we're seeing just a little snapshot, and it's a lovely snapshot, you know, of Angelina Jolie, and I wouldn't, even for two years, with all the caveats, I don't see supporting this application. That's my opinion.
I have a question, County Council, just so that I understand. Assume for the purpose of argument that we granted this with the modifications of conditions we've talked about for a two-year period, which seems to be a reasonable period of time if they're going to do what they're supposed to do. What I understand Mr. Baca just said is, if they don't cease and desist, then at any point in time, the county can move forward on an enforcement proceeding, and that would be a violation of the conditional use permit. And it could be, the permit could be pulled. Is that correct?
I believe that Mr. Baca's interpretation and articulation of the permit conditions as they stand are exactly what you said, that if, in fact, your commission issued the CUP today, and they failed to meet the preconditions as set forth in 7A for the use inauguration, that is grounds for permit revocation immediately.
Well, under that understanding, I'm prepared to go forward if someone will make a motion, or all make a motion.
I'd ask us first, sorry, Robert, you was.
That's right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have some corrections, just clarifications from earlier today, one of which we mentioned Condition Number 34 for the APCD permit to add in language about a temporary or portable emergency generator. It's actually Condition 62. I was looking at the permit for the CPD. It's actually Condition 62 for the CUP.
I think that you already covered them, Condition 37 and Condition 54. I think I heard Commissioner Wesner talk about that, right? And then you wanted and added a condition, Condition 63, that addresses the issue of Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
So I undrafted a language.
Yeah, the permittee is prohibited from any air transportation operations, e.g., helicopter operations, except for emergency response.
Recognized public safety emergency response.
I'll clarify, it's emergency response from a public agency.
Anybody want to take a stab at it?
Oh, I'll take a stab at it, but I get a feeling there's somebody who wants to make a motion to deny based on the lack of finding under Number 1, Page 35. But I don't want to jump out there before. I don't, not yet.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny, to certify that, let's see, which one? Number five, the granting of the conditional use permit. I would not be in support. I would move that we not grant this conditional use permit, given that the proposed development is inconsistent with the intent and the provisions of the local coastal program. And, number five, that...
Page 37.
Thirty-five.
Page 38.
And number five, the proposed development would be detrimental to the public interest.
Sub 1 and 5.
Public interest, health, safety, and convenience and welfare. Correct?
That's correct.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded. We have a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Three to two. Motion fails. Is there a second motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt staff's recommended actions on Exhibit 10 with the following modifications. Condition Number 7B, small i, that the, instead of the five-year, that it be reduced to a two-year term. Item Number 37, that the additional language go from necessary to as required, for clarity, as presented. Item Number 54, the additional language as far as sprinkling the structures as required by the Ventura County Fire Department. And item Number 62, condition regarding the generator use. And finally, the new condition, Number 63, that only air access be permitted to emergency uses by public agencies. With that, I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Pearlman, you have a very difficult job in front of you, I'm sorry to say, but there just doesn't appear to be a whole lot of support for your property owner who has willfully refused to follow the law.
If I might say thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next item reported to the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Just real quickly, I think that the next time that we're going to see you, as I see it now, on my calendar is May 24. That is going to be the 90-day compliance review for CUP 3489, which is the, Mr. Mosler, the revocation and the smart order to comply.
By the way, how did that go today?
Yeah, I haven't been up there. So there was a planning director-level hearing today. Many times I'm not, that's done by staff. That hearing was at 10 o'clock today. The difference between a planning director-level hearing and the planning commission and the board is that at no time is a decision made at a planning director-level hearing. It's there, we're there to take testimony, and we're there to take the public input, and then see, we have 40 days to make a decision on that. And so I'll have to get back up and consult with staff and see what was done at that hearing. But regardless, we'll be back before you on the 24th, just for the compliance review.
You mean, there's no twin Kim up there holding the hearings? Your twins are not up there holding the hearings?
Mr. Baca, who hopefully is not my twin, has left to conduct that hearing, as well as Mrs. Eddy McGee. Yes, we have been in contact with Omar, and Omar is awaiting our decision on this permit to determine whether he'll be put back on the 3098 list or not. So that's basically what I have for you. Do you have anything for me?
Kim, as a practical matter?
Yes.
The hammer's still ready to fall on those folks in this last hearing. How do you see that playing out?
I probably would hold off on that answer without the applicant being here. That's almost a continuation of the hearing, so...
I was just curious.
Okay, thank you for your good work today.
Are we all done?
We adjourn.
All right.